University and the City of Flagstaff for provision of IT technology services by the City of Flagstaff.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt resolution number two zero two three dash eleven.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That's it for you all. Thank you. All right. It is four twenty-one, and we are moving down to item number G. As directed by the City Council, consideration and adoption of resolution number two zero two three dash one two, a resolution declaring City Council's opposition to the United States Supreme Court decision in Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization, opposing Arizona revised statutes thirty-six dash two three two one through two three two six and other provisions of law, of Arizona law criminalizing abortion and supporting the constitutional rights of pregnant persons, including the access to reproductive health care and abortions. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sterling Solomon, your City Attorney. The resolution under this agenda item is not at the recommendation of City staff. It's not before you at the recommendation of my office. A majority of City Council directed the resolution be placed on the agenda, similar to resolutions adopted by Tucson and Phoenix councils. To be clear, it does not create a sanctuary city or local law, but makes a statement by City Council. In August of 2022, a petition was received from citizens requesting that the City Council, quote, "discuss protecting Flagstaff residents from possible arrest and prosecution for providing, accessing, or assisting with abortion services," unquote. Not long after, a council member made a future agenda item request for this council to consider a potential resolution on the matter of abortion in light of U.S. Supreme Court case, the U.S. Supreme Court case known as Dobbs versus Jackson, which overturned Roe v. Wade, and also in light of state legislation related to abortion. Here in Arizona, the cities of Tucson and Phoenix, as previously stated, adopted resolutions expressing opposition to Dobbs and commenting on state legislation related to abortion. Flagstaff City Council has that same option and also has the option not to adopt a resolution. As we were reminded during COVID, the state of Arizona regulates the health industry in Arizona, not cities. Thus, if adopted, the resolution again would not create a law, but would make a statement only. Again, it's on the agenda at the recommendate, not at the recommendation of City staff or my office, but at the request of a majority of council. With that, I'll turn the time back to you, Mayor.
Are we allowed to speak, Mayor, respectfully back? Okay. If you follow a, I mean, if you fill out a comment card, yes. Another card? Yes. I already spoke once, am I disqualified? No. Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome. You can speak up to three times. Okay. So, as we come into this item, thank you, City Attorney, for the clarification. We've received a number of emails that indicate that people haven't read the resolution. So I would just like to remind us that we are here discussing the resolution and whether City Council will vote to adopt it or no. And also, I would ask that we're all very passionate, from whatever perspective you're coming at this from, we're all very passionate. And I would ask that we, that we double our efforts to be respectful to each other. We're a community, and we owe each other, I believe, that the respect of listening to each other's perspectives. I would also ask, because we have so many comment cards, and it's a, it's a, and it's a, you know, passionate topic we're talking about, that we refrain from clapping, or booing, or indicating whether you agree with the speaker. Because as you saw from in the beginning under public comment, if we, if we do that, we will be here all night with applause and boos. So, thank you. I'm looking forward to hearing each of you, and we will get started. Marie Sather, and after Marie is Bitz, Bitzon McIntosh?
Bryson.
I'm sorry?
Bryson.
Bryson McIntosh. Oh, yes, yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am opposed to this adoption of this resolution. And I'd like to present the voice of the unheard, that of the life within the womb of the mother. We do know there's a lot of hardship when a woman becomes pregnant. And actually, we do have a wonderful pregnancy care center in town. I've been involved with that and other ones in California where I've lived. I've listened to those that have called in distress who have been pregnant, even from boyfriends as well. I am a mom. I carried my child to term. So I am, I do know of the circumstances and hardships that come with pregnancy. And I just would like to, I guess, remind too of our mission, and that is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. And I do consider that life within the womb as life that we do need to care for as well. That is our future of our city as well. Without that life growing, it will not become a productive citizen of Flagstaff. So that is what I would like to share today, and I thank you for hearing me and appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. We have Bryson, and we are going to allow a couple of extra minutes for Bryson.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight and allowing a comment.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Madam Mayor, if we could just clarify that that's due to a reading concern, and so we want to make sure Bryson has time with that.
Yes.
And it's under the rules of procedure that that is allowed. The Chair can make that.
Yes, thank you.
An exception. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight and allowing accommodations for me. When you decide regarding resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve, I ask that you consider the speaker's opinions here today. Also, resolution number twenty twenty-three twelve will impact all of Arizona, not just Flagstaff. According to the Pew Research Center, sixty-seven percent of Arizonans are Christians, and the other thirty-three percent are non-Christians. That is two-thirds of Arizonans. What does the Bible say about abortion? Simply put, abortion is murder. It's the killing of a human being created in the image of God. Exodus twenty thirteen says, "You shall not murder." Leviticus twenty-four seventeen says, "Whoever takes a human life shall surely be put to death." Genesis nine five six says, "And for your lifeblood I will require a reckoning; from every beast I will require it, and from man, from his fellow man, I will require a reckoning for the life of man. Whoever sheds the blood of man by man shall his blood be shed for God-made man in his own image." Exodus twenty-one twenty-two dash twenty-five says, "When men strive together and hit a pregnant woman so that her children come out, but there is no harm, the one who hit her shall surely find, be fined, as the woman's husband shall impose on him, and shall pay as the judges determine. But is there no harm? Then ye shall pay life for life, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, hand for hand, foot for foot, burn for burn, wound for wound, stripe for stripe." Proverbs twenty-four eleven dash twelve says, "Rescue those who are being taken away to death; hold those back who are stumbling to the slaughter. If ye say, 'Behold, we would not know this,' does not know who he weighs the heart perceive it? Does not he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And he will not repay man according to his work." Job ten eight dash twelve says, "Your hands fashioned and made me altogether; and would you destroy me? Remember now that you made me as clay, and you would turn me into dust again. Did you not pour me out like milk and curdle the cheese? Clothe me with skin and flesh, and knit me together with bones and news? You have granted me life and loving kindness. Your care has preserved my spirit." Amos one thirteen says, "Thus the Lord, for three transgressions of the sons of Ammon, and for I will not revoke its punishment, because they ripped out the pregnant woman of the lead in order to enlarge their borders." And Deuteronomy thirty nineteen says, "I call heaven and earth to witness again you today. I have set before you life and death, blessing and curse. Therefore choose life, that you and your offspring may live." Had your mother chosen abortion, you wouldn't be here today. Also, Councilmember Aslan, aren't you a Catholic? If so, why are you strongly supporting abortion? As in Catholicism, abortion is also bad. Consider these things, I ask that you oppose resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Thank you. Derek Williams, and then after that is Sandra Redding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Derek Williams. I'm a social worker. I am a youth pastor, and I'm adoptive father of six. I do oppose this, this resolution for the following reasons. Number one, preborn child is alive. Even at twelve weeks gestation, preborn baby has a heartbeat, brainwaves, ten fingers, ten toes, unique fingerprints, and a unique DNA. Abortion, on the other hand, stops a beating heartbeat. Number two, adoption is a beautiful option. It is a choice that every abortion-minded woman has. As a social worker for fifteen years, I have helped many, many families adopt. As a matter of fact, before Roe v. Wade was reversed, there were one million abortions and one million families waiting to adopt. That is the answer right there. Number three is, women can raise a child in the face of adversity. How do I know? Because I was a result of a crisis pregnancy. My mom was eighteen years old when she got pregnant with me. She chose to have me at nineteen. The reason she did is because she had support. There is support in this community. There is support in the faith community to help any woman that has a crisis pregnancy. Third, abortion is violent to the child. I sent all of the council members a link from abortionprocedures.com, and it, it shows exactly what happens during an abortion. It tears, crushes, burns, suffocates the body of a precious preborn baby. Yes, we do care for abortion-minded women. We also care for those who cannot speak for themselves. Finally, in the words of King David, "You created my inmost being. You knit me together in my mother's womb. You saw my, your eyes saw my unformed body, and all the days ordained for me were written in your book before one of them came to be." Life is precious. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from, from outward expressions of support or opposition. Sandra Redding, and then we have Sarah Tous, and Roseanne Tar.
Thank you for listening to me. My name is Sandra Redding, and there has never been a time when I was anything but pro-life. I am the oldest of four children. I have eight children myself, with my husband of forty-six years. I have always, if not consciously, known that I wanted to have a family. When I met my husband-to-be in junior year of high school, at some point, I made a conscious decision that I loved him and I wanted him to be my partner in this family. We were married while he was in the Army. We spent twenty years in the Army, moving frequently, as is the life. Our first child was born in Germany, and after a good night's sleep, I said to myself, "I am where I want to be, where I was born to be. I could do this again tomorrow." I don't remember ever saying it out loud. When I found I was pregnant for the fourth time in four years, I prayed, "Not my will, but thine be done." Over and over every day, as I did for each pregnancy thereafter, I loved each and every one of them. With a family of ten, things get expensive, even when buying by the dozen. I had a few jobs, starting with youngest, when my youngest was three years old. I was working in a lab, and specimen would be sent for identification. The pathologist would make the slides, and I would put these in, the specimen into a capsule for processing overnight. The lab tech told me some of these specimens were products of, pardon me, products of conception, abortion. The pathologist would identify them, and I would send back a report to the doctor. One of these, I picked up a piece of tissue, put it into the capsule. I went back for some more tissue, and there on top was, was a tiny leg. It was less than one and a half inches long and about as big around as a matchstick. It had flesh and bone. It had a tiny foot, an ankle, and it was bent after knee. I nearly passed out. I got the pathologist, and I showed him, and I said, "I won't do this anymore." And after that, that doctor left town. The leg was once a whole child with a beating heart and a soul created by God. It could have been my grandchild or yours. It was sucked out of its gentle nurturing environment violently enough to rip its leg off and be brought into this world in several pieces. The Supreme Court and the wisest doctors cannot come to a decision. When does life begin?
Thank you, Sandra.
I oppose this.
Sarah Tous, Roseanne Tar, and then former State Representative Bob Thorpe.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, for listening to me. My name is Sarah. I'm a lifetime Flagstaff resident and a registered nurse and a mom. I believe that it's crucial to our society to protect the lives of the youngest among us. Life clearly begins at conception and proceeds rapidly. It would be absurd to say that the life is not human until some arbitrary point during pregnancy. This council seems to be concerned with preserving the right of individuals to make their own health care decisions, and I couldn't agree more. However, in the case of pregnancy, another person is existing and physically present within the mother's body. This tiny person is unique, unrepeatable, and fully human. Being a parent is life-changing and full of challenges. Being pregnant is not easy. I understand that women can be overwhelmed with the challenges of finding out they're pregnant, especially if they aren't in good relationships or have support. The objective fact remains, however, that once pregnant, there exists a new person. And abortion does not stop a person from coming into existence. It purposely and intentionally ends the life of that person, violating the most basic right any of us have, the right to life, the right not, to not be killed. I don't stand up here alone. Within my womb is a new person, thirteen weeks old. I don't yet know if my child is a son or a daughter. I know that my child is the sizable lemon, according to my online resources. All his or her organs are developed, and as was stated before, she or he even has her own fingerprints, little tiny nails already. I, I know this child is active, because I've been feeling the jumps and tumbles for, for weeks already. I've listened to the fast, steady heartbeat. This child is real, human, and very alive, and very distinct from me. This child is totally dependent on me. I think we should focus all of our energy and resources on helping women bear and care for their babies, even helping them with the adoption process if that's the best choice. Abortion is not a valid choice in my mind, because it ends the life of a unique, defenseless human being. This is my fifth pregnancy. I have two children that died early in pregnancy due to miscarriage. Even though they were only about seven weeks, when they died, earlier than many abortions, I held their little bodies in my hand and grieved their lives. They were unmistakably real and human. Each human being is unique and unrepeatable. Each life is valuable. It is not easy to accommodate and care for these little ones sometimes, but it's so important. And ultimately, women are honored and cared for when we help them care for their children. Please do not adopt this resolution. Please courageously consider advocating.
Thank you, Sarah. Roseanne Tar.
Thank you for having me. I was involved in a pregnancy help center as either a volunteer or a paid staff for over forty years. And I would like, first off, to clarify, Ms. Saite, from, from the last meeting. The removal of an ectopic pregnancy is not considered an abortion. Not even the Catholic Church considers that. The intent of the removal is not to kill the baby. And so that there's no confusion, a DNC procedure on a woman who's had a miscarriage is also not considered abortion. I don't understand why you want to promote the death of the unborn child and not help the mom. How often have you sat with a woman as she cried over a past abortion and a life lost? I have quite a few times. It's not fun. Have you ever been asked, "Why wouldn't anyone help me? If just one person had helped me, I would have had my baby?" I've been asked that. How many times have you offered to go through labor and delivery with a woman who doesn't have anyone to help her? And then they go with them as they either keep their baby or place it for adoption? I've done both. Now, if you've done that, any of this, I commend you for it, okay? Women, many women will feel, right after abortion, a sense of relief, like a friend of mine did. She said on Monday she was pregnant, on Friday she wasn't, no big deal. Didn't think any more of it. But then about a year later, she got married, and she got pregnant again, and she had a little boy. She said, "I walked down to the nursery to see the baby, and then it hit her." And she said, "Oh, my God, that was a baby I killed." Those are her words, not mine. The effects of abortion can last a lifetime. Women can grieve over their babies when they're fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety years old. And what about the father? The father that wants to accept the responsibility of his actions? He has no rights. I sat with them as they cried also. Let me close with saying, all of our lives began as a single, fertilized ovum. That's a scientific fact. Your mom's like you live. So I'm asking you to please reach out in love, help the pregnant woman, and not just offer abortion. Thank you.
Thank you. Former State Representative Bob Thorpe.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I am former State Representative Bob Thorpe. I would like to address some of the legal issues and history surrounding Roe v. Wade. Article one, section one of the U.S. Constitution states that all legislative powers herein granted shall be vested in a Congress of the United States. However, in nineteen seventy-three, the Supreme Court superseded congressional authority when it created a law. The court violated our constitutional separation of powers when it legalized abortion in the Roe v. Wade ruling. For the next forty-nine years, Congress and our presidents had the opportunity to pass an actual law concerning abortion, but they did not. The Tenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution states that the powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectfully, respectfully or to the people. Our current Supreme Court upheld the Tenth Amendment by returning abortion regulation to the states. They corrected the court's earlier overreach. For over fifty years, abortion has been a polarizing, divisive topic. Counsel is a representative form of government. You represent all Flagstaff citizens. However, your resolution today demonstrates your lack of respect for those Arizonans who believe that an abortion ends the life of a human, who, just like everyone in this building, have equal rights and protection under our laws. I encourage counsel not to pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet Wessels, Michelle Barong.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time. I am making mine very short, because those who've gone before me are a lot more eloquent than I. I strongly oppose this resolution. Abortion is a very emotionally charged issue, as you've heard, with people who fall on both sides of the issue, feeling that they are in the right. I'm familiar with arguments on both sides of the issue. While an unplanned pregnancy will definitely impact the life of the pregnant woman, and abortion ends the life of the baby who has no choice or voice, this resolution, I believe, is an overreach of City Council powers and does not represent the views of Flagstaff's pro-life citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, and after Michelle, Emma Long, and then John Shibe.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Michelle Barong, and I'd like to bring you a perspective. I have three different perspectives, I think, that have been presented today. First, a general perspective, and then one from a legal perspective, and also a personal one. First of all, a little bit of background, I'm a former public defender. I served the public for fifteen years, and I'm retired from public service. And when I became a public defender, I had to stand up and take an oath. And that part of that oath was to uphold the federal, state, and local law. And I took that oath very seriously. And I would like to respectfully remind the council that, I'm pretty sure each of you did that as well. So passing a resolution that contravenes existing state, federal, and federal law, it is my view that that puts you in direct violation of your oath to the people that put you in the seats that you currently sit in. The second thing I wanted to say, from a legal perspective, I just don't, I think it strains credibility to say that at one second, the second before birth of a viable child, that that is, to terminate that life is legal. One second later, after that child is born, and I'm just doing a hypothetical here to make a point, one second after, that same termination of life is considered murder, and it is punishable by life imprisonment. So as a lawyer, that strains credibility to me. Finally, as, from a personal standpoint, I had my first abortion when I was twenty-two years old. It was a late-term abortion, which was very controversial at that time, and they brought my son out in a bucket, his arms and legs torn apart from his body and a hole in his After that, I had two more abortions. It's very easy to have an abortion. It's very quick to have an abortion, and no one tells you, when you have an abortion, how much you're going to hate yourself for the rest of your life. So I've struggled. I'm now sixty-one years old. I still grieve those losses, and I think that putting any kind of government stamp of approval on something that makes abortion easier, it encourages multiple abortions and abortion as a use, a form of birth control. I also know someone I am personally acquainted with who had seventeen abortions. They killed themselves on Mother's Day. So this is, in fact, a lifelong issue. For those who have had abortions, and I urge the council strongly, please do not pass this resolution.
Thank you. Please refrain from outward expressions of support or opposition, and I believe Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
I just want to clarify something. The Speaker claimed that we were ignoring our oath of office. That's absolutely not true. This resolution does not change the law, it only suggests to the legislature that they change the law. That's just a matter of opinion. There's nothing wrong or about that. You may not agree with that, and that's fine, but to imply that we're ignoring our oath of office is completely wrong.
Thank you, council member. Emma Long, and then John Shibe, and then Landon Shibe.
Hi, sorry, I was out in the overflow seating, but my name is Emma Long. I'm a student at NAU, I'm currently a senior studying journalism, and thank you guys for hearing me. I just want to stand up here and say that, as a young person, as a young woman, it's incredibly frustrating hearing things being thrown around about, you know, personal experiences, things like that, because I just want to bring up that everybody's experience is going to be different. Nobody is going to be in the same position, and nobody wants to have an abortion. Nobody is going out intentionally getting pregnant in order to one day have their own abortion. That's not what's happening. It's an incredibly individual and difficult choice. And just like the person before me was talking about, someone who ended up ending their life because of their abortion, I've known people who have wanted to end their lives because they're pregnant and they don't know what to do. And so I think, as a young person who's up against the whole world right now, climate change, all these different political ideologies that are erupting, it seems, in my lifetime, I don't want to be forced to be a mother. I think that motherhood should be a blessing and something somebody should be incredibly excited about. And to force someone into motherhood or to force them through the trauma of birth is something that is life-altering in a way that could change someone forever and, in fact, end them as the person that they were before. So I just want to come up and say that, yes, it's an incredibly emotional issue, but I think that we have to refrain from bringing up all these incredibly emotional stories of ripped-apart babies and things like that, because, at the end of the day, nobody is seeking out an abortion, nobody wants an abortion. Abortion is something that's a final choice that somebody makes for the best of themselves and for their future child as well, because nobody wants to be put into the foster care system, nobody wants to be brought into a world where they're not going to be cared for. So I just want to come up and say that nobody's being forced to have an abortion, we just want the choice, and we just want to be able to choose when and how we're going to bring a child into this incredibly, incredibly difficult world. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Shibe. I'm a father to...
Shibe.
Shibe, yes.
Sorry.
Father to eight children, including two adopted sons who are here with me today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. To protect and enhance the quality of life for all, we heard this earlier today, it is the mission of the City of Flagstaff. I would like to examine Resolution 2023-12 in light of this mission. Regardless of what euphemisms you use, the fundamental truth is that abortion kills a unique, unrepeatable human being. This human child was the natural, healthy result of the procreative and punitive act of intercourse. According to your resolution, ending that child's life seconds before birth is okay. A few seconds and some inches of travel later, however, killing that child is murder, a heinous crime. Allowing a birth mom to end her pregnancy, while it might seem like a quick fix and be better for her quality of life, study after study and story after story, show the terrible toll an abortion has on the birth mom and birth dad. Now back to Resolution 2023-12. It should be clear that the murder of an unborn child neither protects life nor enhances the quality of life for any of the affected parties. To better align with the mission of the City of Flagstaff and, frankly, with human morality, I would propose the council consider a resolution making Flagstaff a sanctuary city for adoption. This would serve to protect life as well as enhance the lives of the child, birth parents, and the adoptive parents. Two great curses in society today are abortion and infertility, yet adoption can greatly reduce the impact of both. Baby gets to live in a loving home, adoptive parents see their dream of raising a family fully fulfilled, birth parents know they blessed a family rather than kill their child. Prenatal support for birth moms could be provided by city and volunteer resources. Just think, Flagstaff could be known as a place where family dreams come true, where birth parents have the wonderful memory of either deciding to parent or to place their child for adoption in a loving home. Kids, let's go to Flagstaff, that's where you were born. We love going back there. Rather than being killed in the womb, maybe the woman or man who will cure cancer or discover a super-clean, sustainable energy option will say, "In Flagstaff, I was given the gift of living." Their mission is to protect and enhance the life for all. I am living proof that they do. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next up, we have Landon Shibe, and after that, Marilyn Wiseman.
Good afternoon. My name is Landon Shibe, and I am the adopted son of John and Amy Shibe, and I am living proof of the pro-life industry. In essence, this resolution, and I think I speak for all adopted children when I say this, is saying you all think we should be dead. Our lives don't count for a thing. I don't have the right to live and breathe. The inalienable right to life of every human being is a constitutive element of a society and of our constitution. The only reason you are sitting on this council right now is because your mom chose life for you and respected by civil society... chose life for you. The inalienable rights of the person must be recognized and respected by civil society and the political authority, you. These human rights depend neither on single individuals nor by parents. They solely belong to the human nature and inherent in person of virtue of the creative act from which the human being took its nature in origin, liberty and justice for all. Does that not include the unborn? The unborn are just as human as we are. They are growing, they possess unique human DNA and are offspring of human parents. The only difference between us and them is their size, level of development, environment, and their degree of dependency. I pray that God forbids you to make our city a pro-baby, murder sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Wiseman and Stephanie McKenzie, after that.
Actually, I think I just submitted a written statement, but I feel like I should say something. I'm seventy-one years old. I was around before Roe v. Wade was approved, and there were many women who died from illegal abortions. That the last fifty years, abortion has been legal, and women's choices have been there before they didn't have choices. And somehow or other, because it's fifty years ago, we're forgetting the tragedies of women's lives fifty years ago. Women have had fifty years of this freedom. And I understand and I sympathize with people's religious perspectives about when life starts. I disagree with how they think about it, but I think the values that we have, the values that you have, that were reflected in the February 21st meeting that you spoke about, I don't think the comments tonight, even though there's so many of them, should really... I think you can be sympathetic and you can be respectful, but I think the things you said were very powerful last meeting that we had, and I just want to support you to, in spite of the numbers that are here today who are saying these things, to remember what it was like fifty years ago before. In addition, yes, we have the fifteen-week ban, but there's people, the same people here tonight would like to stop that. The same people here tonight might think that birth control is a form of abortion. I mean, women deserve to have the right to control their own bodies. They deserve to have babies when they want to and not when they're forced to because of an unwanted pregnancy. And I just hope that we're not going to take a "how" numbers of people that are here versus your values and what you believe. And I support you to vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie McKenzie, and then Gretchen Slover.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about the leading cause of death in the United States and also in the entire world. Over sixty-six million have been murdered since Roe v. Wade alone, and this is the Holocaust of our current generation. The proposed resolution states that it is intended to protect the physical, psychological, and socioeconomic well-being of pregnant women. And it's true, women do need to be protected from mental health problems, addiction, abusive relationships, increased trauma, lower socioeconomic status, self-destructive behaviors, difficulties of single motherhood, autoimmune disorders, infertility, increased miscarriages, and even suicide. These are just some of the devastating aftershocks of abortion. They occur because we all have a conscience, and there's nothing humane or natural about forcefully dismembering and removing a live baby from the womb. Post-abortive women do not walk into solutions but into trauma and destruction because the baby was never the problem in the first place. Millions of women like myself who have lived out these consequences and who would have been deterred by the law know that the problem in a society, the real problem, is a society that chooses to label babies as problems when they are actually gifts from God, a society that convinces women that murdering their children will empower them when it leads them into bondage, and a society that chooses to protect the well-being of criminals over the innocent when it robs the victims of justice. I am not a victim, I am a guilty murderer, set free from sin and redeemed only by the blood of Christ. There is freedom for abortion. I am accountable for my choice. But I certainly didn't have any friends on that day. True friends don't give us a noose or a razor blade when we're feeling overwhelmed and hopeless. And a society that claims to protect women shouldn't give them easy access to baby murder just because they don't want to face their situation. Those who did nothing while I walked my child into being murdered and the supporters of the legislation that made it easily accessible were actually my enemies. Just as if you support this resolution, you will be the enemies of the women and children affected by it. You will also be the friends of those who believe that dehumanizing and exterminating a group of human beings is acceptable as long as it's called healthcare. Referring to murder as healthcare is like referring to gas chambers as showers. Renaming it does not change the fact that human beings are being destroyed, regardless of whether people regret destroying them. It won't change the truth that it is a Holocaust, and it is wrong. It is not cultural philosophies, but our Creator who decides what is good and what is evil. What I did to my child was wicked in God's eyes, and showing partiality to murderers such as myself is an abomination to Him. So as your friend today, I plead for you to not be wise in your own eyes, to fear the Lord and turn away from evil. Turn to Jesus, the only sinless one who took upon Himself the wrath that we deserve on the cross to wash our scarlet sins white as snow. Stand for justice for the children and for the physical, psychological, socioeconomic well-being of women by voting no on this resolution, to follow the Lord's command to rescue those who are being taken away to death and hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter.
Thank you, Stephanie. Gretchen, and then Brian Miller, and then Gary Howell.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and council members. I'm Dr. Gretchen Slover. It's a sad day in Flagstaff history as you are focused on passing a pro-abortion city resolution which contains no mention of the rights of the millions of human beings who were robbed of their choice to live. The clause of abortion disproportionately sever the lives of blacks, natives, Hispanics, and other minority groups, resulting in legal eugenics. In honor of the lives which have been sacrificed at the altar of abortion, I offer them this
Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen. Brian Miller, Gary Howell, and Victoria Cook.
Oh, Mayor and City Council, my name's Brian Miller. I'm the grateful father of two and grandfather of six. I would like for us to pray for the unborn and the babies that are in danger of abortion. And if you want to stand and pray with me, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen." I have a quote from Mother Teresa. "Any country that accepts abortion is not teaching its people to love, but to use any violence to get what they want." This is why the greatest destroyer of love is abortion. Please vote no on this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Gary Howell, Victoria Cook, and Jackie Berkland.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Per your protocol, my name is Gary Howell. I live at 7850 East Old Walnut Canyon Road, Flagstaff, Arizona, and I'm a life resident of Flagstaff, Arizona. I would like to thank you for your service and your service to our city, and I appreciate, at this time, everyone's attention, please. I, as the mayor said, this isn't easy, but I've learned through my grandmother, who died at a hundred and two, two years young, to stand up against wrong and play and stand up for right. I am against this resolution and even this meeting, as this is a waste of resources and time and money. Let us remember that the Pledge of Allegiance and our city mandate says "for all." However, council member, I disagree with you. This is not "for all." This is a political stance where somebody is posturing to divide us in ranks. Again, everybody's attention would be greatly appreciated.
I'm paying attention to you, sir. I'm paying attention to everybody.
No, sir. Eye contact would be great. So basically, with you entering this topic, you are thrusting your chest and breeding ill relations within my community. I've lived here lifelong. I've raised my children, I've done business. I'm sixty-nine, I've been self-employed in this city, and I do not want you to destroy my community. Even with the given numbers of how many people have spoke here, I think it's evident that this should not even have been on the table. But I will close in peace and say, please do not approve this resolution and get back to... to city projects. That's housing, that's the police, fire, all our services, our roads, our snow removal. Let's get back to business. I do appreciate your time, and those that listened and looked, I thank you for your attention.
Again, please do not outwardly show your opposition or your support. We want everyone to feel comfortable speaking here regardless of what their perspective is. All right, Victoria Cook, Jackie Berkland. And after that is Mark Howitt.
I feel like I came to my dentist office. Pardon me.
Sometimes it feels like that for us, too.
Well, since we already have access to abortion, I'm confused. The wording on the resolution is confusing, so the resolution only makes sense if we plan on pursuing up to birth. So may I ask? Evidence-based medicine versus political-based medicine? So I'm asking questions. I'm coming up with, it only makes sense since we already have abortion laws. Aborting babies up until the month of birth is not healthcare. Evidence-based medicine says we have the best accurate healthcare in the world. I still feel like I'm at the dentist office. Please pardon me. I don't know where I was. We do have the best care in the world, especially acute care, the best healthcare for moms and babies. We can actually remove babies, the placenta intact, of course, operate on the mom, save her life, put the baby back, and 36 weeks later, healthy mom and baby. We have that. We can, women along with their physicians, I want to say as a woman, with our physicians all over the globe, do make life and death healthcare choices when complications arise. We already have that. It's not the abortion clinics. I'm sorry. I do not have funding or time to present experts to relay evidence-based medicine. Even if we do know how, even if I knew experts, their careers would be compromised. There are political, well-funded agencies who can destroy these experts. We can relay, we can actually relay, I can't bring them here and ask them to speak, but they can relay that abortions do have serious health implications. We can relay that those women do want to keep their babies. We can relay that being pregnant is not a disease, does not cause physical or mental harm. That is not true. It is not very nice of abortion industries to pretend to be evidence-based medicine to donate an abundant amount of funding to NAU.
Thank you, Victoria. Jackie Berkland, Mark, and then Phil Goldblatt.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I'm against this resolution. By allowing this to happen here in Flagstaff, you're going to make this a sanctuary city for evil to have its way. Life is a gift from God, and the opposite of live is evil. Only God can create life, and He knows and loves each one of us. That's true also for the children growing in the womb. Flagstaff, I believe, is the most beautiful city in Arizona. The beauty is that God created Himself. Some say it's God's country. People come up here to see the beauty, to escape the chaos of the big city. It's a sanctuary to find rest and peace for many. And I believe that any blessings that we have left here in Flagstaff that God has given us will be jeopardized by this evil if we allow it in. I know you've heard of the word malignant. If you have a malignant cancer, that's real bad. By the dictionary, malignant means evil, very harmful, causing decay that will lead to death. This malignant cancer will be the wound that will infect Flagstaff, and all of us will be affected by it. We are fighting a battle with evil. Our struggle is not with flesh and blood, but the struggle is with the principalities and the powers of evil, and evil would love to see our city decay. I ask you not to vote on this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, thank you, council. Most of the views I agree with have already been expressed. I won't repeat that. But I do not like the fact that the council's passing or wanting to pass a resolution that is really divisive in our community, does not represent all of us in Flagstaff, as can be seen tonight. And if you do this, this is you. It's not all of Flagstaff. It might be half of Flagstaff, but that's not good. One of the people brought up about your oath of office. There is a problem in Section 6, and you can ask Sterling for advice legally on this, but you're calling on the Flagstaff Police Department not to enforce state law. How do you explain that? You know, don't pass this thing. It's divisive in our community. Whether you're pro-choice or pro-life, why divide the community? Why not just drop the topic, stick to getting our streets plowed, getting our roads fixed, the thing that the council is supposed to be doing, what we elected you to do? We didn't elect, none of us elected you to take stances on abortion. None of us, pro-choice or pro-life. That's not what the city's council purview is, is to do city stuff. Fix our roads, take care of our fire, our police, give proper raises to the people that are running our snowplows, so we have experienced snowplow people. Come on, do the stuff we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And just a clarification, the resolution does not direct the police to disobey the law.
It does in Section 6.
It's in Section 6.
It's there. Read it. Can you read it aloud, please?
Phil Goldblatt, Sandra Runkel, and Marie Dunn.
Dear Mayor Daggett and city council members, I just want to preface my remarks by saying that I'm going to have more of a legal perspective and also to address certain specifics items that are contained in your resolution as it's written. It certainly appears correct that if our city council wishes to call on the Arizona State Legislature to repeal a law, in this case ARS Sections 36, 23, 21 through 23, 26, then they must first hold a referendum of all the residents of Flagstaff to see if a majority supports such a repeal. As you well know, city council is supposed to represent all of the residents of Flagstaff, not just some who hold a particular political viewpoint. Because the state of Arizona passed a law, SB 1164, regarding limits to abortions based on the U.S. Supreme Court decision in Dobbs, and our state upheld the ruling in that decision and that our state includes and represents all cities within its boundaries, Flagstaff City Council must uphold that law or join a lobbying group who will petition the state legislature to repeal or replace such law. Such lobbying cannot be done, though, on a citywide basis without first obtaining the consent of a majority of the residents, or of course, it can be done as each of you as individuals. I firmly believe it is inappropriate for our city council to direct our city police department to ignore any legally correct directive regarding the enforcement of Arizona state law. We are under their jurisdiction, not over it. It is also a violation of every police officer's oath to uphold all of the laws of the state of Arizona, to ask them to not cooperate with a state agency, in this case, the state or county police, in the enforcement of an Arizona state law. This resolution does nothing except foaming controversy regarding whether Flagstaff will have, will have, the legal authority in the future to become a virtual sanctuary city for abortion in Arizona. As you well know, abortion is believed by many to be equivalent to the killing of innocent life if performed after 15 weeks of gestation, and that comes directly from the Mississippi law that the U.S. Supreme Court ruled on. Why would any council member wish to sanction such killings? To me, this is unconscionable and should be to all of you as well. So I strongly urge all council members to reject the passing of this resolution. Thank you for hearing me out, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions from council.
Thank you, Phil. And next we have Sandra Runkel, Marie Dunn, and Paul Richardson.
Hello. At the last council meeting and tonight, our wise city attorney presented the options that council had available to them when considering the proposed resolution. He advised you that you can either adopt a resolution similar to Phoenix and Tucson, or you could refrain from making an official statement. Unfortunately, you have decided that your opinion is so valuable and enlightened that it must become the voice for all of Flagstaff. It is clear to me that council had every intent to pass a resolution based on their personal opinions with complete disregard for the values and beliefs of half of your constituents. Passing this highly divisive resolution accomplishes one thing, getting a gold star from Flagstaff Abortion Alliance and nothing more. A city council resolution cannot supersede Arizona Law 36-2322 that allows for an abortion of an unborn human being not to exceed the gestational age of 15 weeks, and yet also allows for exceptions to the age of an unborn human in medical emergencies. A resolution does not further the health of children, our families in our city, and it is a contradiction to the April 7th agenda item sponsored by Mayor Daggett to declare April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. The two do not go hand in hand. Instead of adopting a new resolution, I would recommend that council adopt, embrace, and live our city's established mission statement: "To protect and enhance the quality of life for all." And if I could add a caveat to that, to also, I would like to second John Sheehy's resolution that Flagstaff become nationwide known as a sanctuary city for adoption. Let's support our women. Let's support our families. Let's become unique and show the love that I've known in this city for 45 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I deeply respect what you do, and I appreciate your roles, and I hope that you seriously consider this proposition and what my friend who just spoke now gave an excellent speech on it, and it would be a wonderful thing for Flagstaff to be a city of adoption. We've had this scourge on our nation for 50 years. We've aborted millions of children. I was in a situation where I was in an unplanned pregnancy. I was not given the attention, emotional support I needed from my family. I stuck it out because I knew God was not going to like that, and I went through the embarrassment of it. It did not affect my career. I got two degrees. Nothing was changed other than a year of putting everything on pause. Now, my daughter I gave birth to, she is now, she's a physician, MD out of Wake Forest Medical. Yes. These children are valued, no matter what they do. They're a gift of life. We don't know what they're going to do or where they're going. She's served in medical missions in Afghanistan, Pakistan, Russia, and the streets of the children of Russia, terrible situation. She and her husband are going back. She's given me two children. This is a very important resolution. You have a responsibility that none of us can carry out. This is a matter of, why isn't this not a civil rights issue? They are killing our males. They are killing our black babies. This is wrong statistically. They are highly cut out of life. Why? Because they're males? Because they're black? They put those organizations in poor cities. They target those babies. They target those males. We need God-fearing, black males to lead the black community. Hispanics, the churches, the prayers, the believers, we're the ones that overturned this in our state. It's an atrocious abomination. If God were to come here and He sees this, I don't know why He puts up with this. This nation, I don't know why He puts up with this. But it's your responsibility to stop it. Please do not go forward with this resolution. These are human beings, and the way they can say that you no longer breathe, they put a knife to your neck.
Thank you, Marie.
And then you can't come out breathing for late-term abortions, and that's what they're doing.
And next we have Paul Richardson, and then Tom Pearson, and Anne Ingram.
Yes, my name's Paul Richardson, and I live here in Flagstaff, and I'd like to go on record saying that I...
Can you speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, yes. Can I get my time back?
She hasn't even started it yet.
She did. Okay, thank you. Paul Richardson, I'm here, a citizen of Flagstaff, and I thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you. Mayor Becky and council, you've shown a lot of graciousness. I don't know your motivations behind this resolution, but I want to come out on public record saying I am opposed to this resolution. I have so much to say, but little time to say it. But as I was coming down, when I found out the meeting today, I came down and I happened to be reading a book called "In Pursuit of Excellence," and it actually has a couple of quotes by Everett Coop, our attorney surgeon, used to be the Surgeon General of the United States, and he made a statement. And then another statement was made by the First National Conference of Abortion in the fall of 1967 in Washington, D.C. I'm going to read both of these statements by both Everett Coop and the conference, the first abortion in the United States in 1967, and maybe it might tell us something. And I won't tell you which order I'm reading and which one I'm reading from, but you'll find it very interesting. "Once there is a union of the sperm and egg, and 23 chromosomes are each brought together, that one cell with 46 chromosomes has all the DNA, the whole genetic code, the will, if not interrupted, will make a human life just like you and me with the potential for God consciousness." Then they asked a question, let me read the other one. "Later, we find," this is the statement, another statement, "we find no point in time between the union of the sperm and the egg and the birth of an infant at which point we cannot say it is a human being." So they kind of say the same thing, but they're coming from two different entities. One is from the First National Conference on Abortion, and the other one is from Everett Coop. They basically say the same thing, and it's what we've been saying here today, is life actually does begin at conception. And then, pausing there for a moment, when we make a statement as a city of Flagstaff, even though it's a non-binding statement, it has no effect in law, but it's a statement. Flagstaff, we're making a statement that we agree that life does not begin at a, we don't regard life at the inception of life. And for us as a city to do that, I'm not in favor of that. I really am not. I'm hoping the council will see that respectfully. Please, would you consider what these men said and what the abortion industry said? They said the same... They said the same thing. They both said the same thing. Please don't adopt the resolution. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Tom Pearson, Anne Ingram, Elise Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for hearing me again. I can't possibly add to the eloquence of all of the previous speakers, so I'm not even going to make an attempt to do that. But I would like to point out two errors. One, in the resolution itself, makes the mistake of saying this phrase, "supporting the constitutional rights of pregnant persons." It's not the city council's privy to determine what are constitutional rights. That's a job for the Supreme Court. And they did make that decision in Dobbs v. Jackson. They specifically said that abortion rights are not constitutional issues, they are legislative issues. So to make a statement here that contradicts decided law of the Supreme Court is just a gross error, and you shouldn't be entertained. The second point is that another grossly misused phrase is "my body, my choice," and has been alluded to by other speakers. I totally agree with that phrase. My body, what constitutes my body? Every cell in my body has one thing in common. It has exactly the same DNA, exactly the same DNA. That's my body. The embryo, the fetus, the baby, has completely different DNA from the mother. So when someone, a pro-abortion person, says "my body, my choice," I agree with that. But that embryo, fetus, baby, is definitely not part of the mother's body. It is an independent, created being with all the rights and privileges of any human being. And you should not adopt this resolution that totally ignores that absolute biological fact that we all learn in the biology, first biology class we ever took. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne? And then Elise?
I want to thank you all for your service to us and for taking all this time to listen to everyone. We all really appreciate your diligent efforts. Thank you. I believe every person deserves respect and has the right to their opinion. But as a city of Flagstaff chooses to endorse or force one opinion over another, when many disagree with that opinion, that's extremely divisive and pulls apart our community. I think you've seen by the show of people here that a vast majority, that a great deal of people in Flagstaff are opposed to having some kind of a resolution. Life is such a precious gift, and all human beings have a right to life. Human rights are inclusive. They belong to all human beings, not just some. A woman who is pregnant should be informed of all the options and help available to her with loving compassion as she considers the life of her unborn child and the tremendous support system that is available to all new mothers and their preborn or newborn children, as well as options like adoption, which has been repeatedly mentioned here. To prevent women from being made aware of these options and available help is terribly wrong and uncaring. It's so important to recognize there are differing opinions on this issue, and not to take the side of only some in our community, and not to just represent you because you are representatives in Flagstaff. You represent all of us, not just your opinions. Please don't make a decision that could cause great division and not be agreed upon by the majority of the people in Flagstaff, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elise? And then John Mark Dyer? And then Jay Smith?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, I would like to say that I have too served my country and served my community by joining the Marine Corps. I am a veteran, and the thought that this is even up for debate is ridiculous. So, most importantly, I will say that I am a follower of Yeshua Hamashiach. I believe in my body, my choice. I believe in the free will of human beings. I believe that whatever I want to do to or with my body, I have the right to do that. I have that free will given by Adonai himself. So many people here today are here to tell you what the Bible says, but I'm not here to do that. I'm here to tell you what science says. Because many, many people in this country, many people in this town will say, because it's science, it's healthcare, right? Well, what does science say? What is life? When does it begin? Well, according to the biology textbooks on the requirements to be considered alive according to philosophy, according to astrobiology, on even the NASA website, life, to determine life requires organization, to organize structure to perform a specific function. A cell is the most basic form of this. Reproduction, the ability to reproduce of its own kind. Metabolism, homeostasis, the ability to keep up the existence by regulating its internal environment to keep the constant favorable state. Hereditary, or DNA, or the passing of genes. responsiveness to stimuli or to its environment, growth development, and adaptation. To put it simply, life is an entity with the ability to adapt to its environment. So does a fetus fit all those requirements? If you say yes, you are very correct. If you say no, I pose the question, where is the line drawn? Because women on birth control or past menopause, or even prepubescent girls cannot reproduce, are they still human? Are they still alive? Diseases that cause people to never develop past a certain age plague so many people in this world. Are they still human? Are they still alive? People in comas cannot live on their own. Neither can they respond to their environment. Are they still human? The elderly, those that can no longer care for themselves, are they still human? All these are examples on whether they are alive or not. Abort, let's call abortion exactly what it is. It is murder and a sacrifice to mullet.
Thank you. John Mark Dyer, Jay Smith, and then Kate Smith?
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Just thank you for serving. I'm not a public speaker, so I'm going to read what I wrote up earlier today. I was born in Flagstaff. I grew up out in Cheshire, moved to Donie Park, and I went to Coconino High School. My first house was in Sunnyside, and I now live over in Mobile Haven by the mall. I have a wife and four kids that mean the world to me, and I work for a local electric motor company designing high-efficiency electric motors. Today, I'm here as an advocate for women's rights over their own bodies. The women that I speak for are not able to stand here and defend those rights because they have only existed for between 15 and 40 weeks. They can't talk yet, but their hearts beat. They have brains, eyes, ears, arms, legs, fingers, and toes. And I, in the words of Solomon, "do not know the way in which a spirit comes to the bones in the womb." But when I look at a 15-week-old fetus, I am compelled to believe that they possess a human spirit and that their life must be protected, even if terminating it could improve the mother's physical, psychological, or socioeconomic well-being, using the language from the proposed resolution. You probably guessed this, but I'm also advocating for men in the same defenseless circumstance. Last year, Ducey signed Senate Bill 1164 that bans abortions after 15 weeks except under medical emergencies, and today, our city council proposes opposition to this bill. There are many people in Flagstaff that will be angered and possibly hate me for speaking today. However, there are also many people in Flagstaff who do not agree with this resolution, and I believe the council's opposition is a misrepresentation of Flagstaff citizens and supports a crime to humanity. In my last 30 seconds, I want to address the many women here who have had abortions. You may be tempted to think that I hate you or that I'm casting judgment on your soul, and I want to be very clear that I am not. I believe that we are all guilty of committing evil, and I am no better than anyone here. In the words of the Apostle Paul, Jesus Christ came into the world to save sinners of whom I am chief. I know and repent my pride, my selfishness, my self-deceit, and I continue to find new ways to rationalize my sin, but I have hope and confidence that my sin is forgiven, and I believe that that hope and forgiveness is freely offered to all who repent and believe in the resurrection of Jesus to pay for our sins. And through Jesus, I personally live guilt-free. Since I'm touching on things of my faith, I have one warning and promise: Christians are a bunch of sinners who will continue to fail and disappoint. However, if you turn to Christ, He will never disappoint, and He will fill you with the peace, joy, strength of His Spirit. So Mayor and City Council, please do not misrepresent your city with this resolution.
Thank you. So again, so that everyone can feel comfortable to speak, please, no outward expressions of support or opposition. Jay, hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Daggett and members of the council. Appreciate the time here. I want to start off just saying that I do oppose this adoption of Resolution 2023-12. As an ordained minister, you'd think I'd go towards some of the other speakers, but I'm going to go with, dealing with this issue of healthcare. I have several concerns with the resolution, basically saying that the citizens of Flagstaff deem abortion as healthcare. Specifically, I'm concerned that the resolution cites a designation from the Center for Reproductive Rights. I feel that's kind of like asking Shell or Chevron whether fossil fuels are good for the environment. You know, the Center for Reproductive Rights is obviously, if you go to their website, they are a pro-abortion organization, and it is cited in the resolution. If we're so concerned with healthcare, and specifically women's healthcare, why doesn't the resolution acknowledge organizations like the Hope Women's Center and the Hope Pregnancy Center? They provide free women's healthcare in our region, and they need to be advertised, and people need to know about that. Also wanted to look at Planned Parenthood, which is the provider of about a third of the abortions in Arizona, as an example of women's health. According to their 2020 and 2021 annual report, in comparison to the previous year, abortions were up 7.5%, but breast screening and PAP tests were down 32%. Well-women exams were down 39%, and adoption referrals were down 27%, which meant they referred one person to adoption per 200 abortions. Since 2010, the total cancer screening and preventative services have dropped 74%. Prenatal services are down 72%. Contraceptive services are down 41%. This begs to ask why? I think it's pretty clear, the business of abortion is more profitable than actual healthcare. The annual report from Planned Parenthood states that they have $2.1 billion in net assets. They received $633.4 million from government funding, and they had, excuse me, they had an excess revenue of $133.7 million last year. Abortion is big business. It's not women's healthcare. So I want you to please consider these facts as you make a decision that will represent the entire community. I do not approve this, and I hope you do not approve this resolution, and let's start beginning a real discussion about women's healthcare. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jay. Kate Smith? And then Chalel Joara? Again, my apologies if I'm doing a horrible job at the pronunciation of your name. Thank you, Kate, for having an easy one.
Yeah, it is pretty easy, but I'm not going to sing "God Bless America," even though I could. But anyways, good afternoon, Mayor Daggett and members of the council. My name is Kate Smith, and I want to tell you my story and ask you not to support this Resolution 2312. 28 years ago, I went to Planned Parenthood here in Flagstaff. I was scared. I was seeking advice and help. I was only given one option. That one option was to abort my baby. So on a Saturday morning in May, I rode with who I thought was a friend, two and a half hours to Phoenix to get my abortion. Upon my arrival, I filled out paperwork. I was immediately given several pills to numb my brain and my body. The staff then hurried me into a room where the doctor came in, going against his Hippocratic oath of doing no injury or wrong, said that the procedure would be no big deal. He didn't warn me of the physical pain. He especially did not warn me of the mental anguish and guilt that I would endure for decades. 45 minutes later, I was on my way back to Flagstaff. I tell you this so you know the truth. There is no medical condition that required this abortion. There was no threat to my life. I made the decision based on false evidence given to me by those whom I thought I trusted. And I was wrong for doing that. That's on me. I've asked and received forgiveness for my selfishness, from my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, but I am concerned for all women that are continually lied to about their abortion, sorry, that are continually lied to that abortion is their only and best option. It goes against everything a moral society believes in. There are two facts that I want to leave with you guys today. The first one, we all learned in eighth grade. If a male sperm fertilizes a female egg, a human is the result. That's a scientific fact. The second fact is that everyone here today, no matter what gender you are, no matter what ethnicity you are, and no matter what social status you are, can all thank your mother for not having an abortion. You have that opportunity. There are over 63 million babies that never had that opportunity since 1973. 63 million babies never had the chance to say anything. How many Einsteins have we aborted? How many Beethovens have we aborted? How many Abraham Lincolns have we aborted? How many Maya Angelos have we aborted? How many Martin Luther Kings have we aborted? Just think about that one. Thank you for your time today. Please do not play a role in the right to end the life of a child. Do not support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Chalel? And then Brian Weber?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You actually pronounced my name perfectly. A lot of people don't often. I am speaking tonight just because I strongly oppose against this resolution and hope to get through my reasoning why within the three minutes. I'm a 24-year-old, first-generation college graduate. Flagstaff has been my proud home for the last six to seven years, and I'm very proud of the person that I have become today. But I wasn't always this person. I was once a 13-year-old who would attempt to take her own life several times and commit self-harm multiple times to deal with the many barriers that were my life. I grew up in a Christian church where I was often made to feel like an illegitimate child because I was simply born out of wedlock. What a shocking sin. I blamed myself for my parents' marital issues and for lack of certain core familial support that I had growing up, that I did not have growing up. I saw myself as nothing more but an inconvenience and a burden. If only I hadn't been born in the first place. My parents' world and everybody's worlds around me would have been so much better. I remember praying at night that my mom would have just had an abortion when she first had me, had the chance. At naive 13-year-old me killing myself was no different than my mom having an abortion. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't even an inconvenience that could have been avoided if I had been aborted. As society, we are quick to tell a pregnant woman to kill her unborn baby. In fact, we even encourage it. We advertise places like Planned Parenthood as clinics that adolescents under the age of 18 can go and get their mistake taken care of without even needing parental consent. We no longer call it abortion, but we call it reproductive healthcare, which it's not reproductive healthcare. That's wearing a condom. But if abortion is a healthcare right to deal with an inconvenient situation, what about suicide? I was naive and depressed and 13-years-old, and suicide was my answer to inconvenient situations. Would you have told me at 13, and naive and suicidal, that taking my own life... and naive and suicidal, that taking my own life was the right thing to do because it's what felt best at the moment that dealt with my inconveniences in life? So why do we tell moms that it's okay to get rid of their inconvenience? That just because it seems scary and it might be getting rid of some inconvenient reminders in their life, that it's okay to terminate their pregnancy? Wife, to terminate, sorry, I don't do this. This is very hard, Mayor. To terminate life, an unborn child, a very real human being, who has the right and doesn't even get the chance to defend themselves? Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Weber, Matthew Dyer, I think, and Joya. Thanks for the phonetic spelling of your name, Joya.
Yes, good evening. I am Brian Weber, and I want to say thank you to all of you, especially the council and the mayor, and all of you that are here today or tonight for this important issue. And I've heard a lot, and we've all heard a lot of emotional pleas tonight, and I'm not going to add to those. You're welcome. But I want to look at this. It seems like, I wasn't here for the previous meeting, but it seems like none of these sort of appeals were made in the prior council meeting concerning this resolution. And so if you want to remove the religious component, and you want to go strictly to the secular side or to the worldly view, okay, let's do that. Let's try to. We've heard the religious side tonight. And by the grace of God, I hope to be a religious man as well, or I try to be. But let's look at it strictly from a secular standpoint. And I don't know what your motivations are or where you are personally on this issue. But if we do that, let's say, why? This resolution appears to be strictly a political statement for some type of advantage that Flagstaff, are we trying to be like Phoenix? Are we trying to be like Tucson? I understand they have resolutions, and I don't know the wording of them, but they're apparently similar, and maybe this one is fashioned after them. I don't have to tell you why people come to Flagstaff. You know more than I do. But from my own personal experience, we've only been here less than two years, and we came to Flagstaff to get away, to escape from the valley. Okay, we don't want to be like, well, do we really want to, is that the kind of statement that we want to make? Just because Phoenix and Tucson are abortion-friendly and whatever their terms are, is that the statement we want? Is that the reputation we want? Is that what we're trying to be? So I ask you to look inside, look at yourselves, look at your own hearts, and say, wow, maybe there's tremendous pressure for us to do this. And not such a good idea. I agree with several of the other gentlemen, people stated earlier, that this issue is way, way bigger than the Flagstaff City Council. And I think you're probably thinking tonight, whoa, whoa, boy, we opened a can of worms tonight, didn't we? Well, it's way bigger than all of us. And strictly speaking, I think we need to stay in our lanes. You have your oaths of office. This is out of your bailiwick. Don't go there. Don't go there. There's no reason to. People don't come to Flagstaff for an unfettered abortion. They come here for lots of other reasons, and we all know those. What a beautiful, family-friendly environment this is. Let's keep it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Matthew Dyer? I turned this off. Then Mark Zarabin?
Honorable Mayor and council members, thanks for your time and consideration. My name is Matt. I'm a lifetime Flagstaff resident, a father, a nurse, and a veteran. But my credentials or lack thereof have no bearing on the truth, as the truth stands independently and is no regarder of persons. Here's some truth. I'm here in opposition because I oppose the murder of the innocent. Yes, murder is the correct word, as murder is the premeditated malicious killing of one human being by another. And scientifically speaking, 98% of embryologists agree with common sense by asserting that human life begins at conception. The scientific debate was settled over 50 years ago. Calling this sterilized form of child sacrifice by the Orwellian euphemism of women's health is a lie, objectively, as it is little women, daughters, who are murdered disproportionately by abortion around the world. It certainly can't be the health of those little women that's being referred to, and it can't be the health of the mother either. The procedure may be relatively harmless to the mother's body in some cases, but it is never harmless to her soul. Yes, we have souls, and so do our preborn. If we were nothing more than bags of mostly protoplasm animated by the accidental fizzing of chemicals in the brain, then none of this would matter, but that is an abyss we don't have the right to stare into because it is not reality. We do have souls, and so do our preborn, and abortion is destructive to the souls of all participants, mother, father, doctor, and anyone in support. Since abortion is at the heart of the proposed resolution, it may be helpful to examine one of abortion's historic champions. The white racist eugenicist and founder of Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger famously said this, quote, "Eugenic sterilization is an urgent need. We must prevent multiplication of this bad stock." Bad stock. I wonder what she meant. She explains here, quote, "We don't want the word to go out that we want to exterminate the N-word population." To this day, most abortion mills are strategically located in minority communities, and it is a well-documented statistic that about five black babies are aborted to every one white baby. The fact remains that pro-life people like me want more little black and brown babies in the world, not less. Those who desire the opposition, or I'm sorry, those who desire the opposite have to reckon with the fact that they are in alignment with Sanger's racist and reprehensible ideology, regardless of the amount of melanin in their skin. The proponents can either harden their hearts, plug their ears, and sear their consciences, or repent of this abomination and turn to the Lord Jesus Christ for forgiveness, which He offers freely in abundance. God will judge Sanger and all proponents of her ethnocidal and infanticidal ideology. I urge you to be kind to your own souls and the souls of the innocent and reject this evil resolution.
Thank you, Matt. Matthew, I'm sorry. Joya, Mark, and Allison Dyer?
Good evening, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Joya Woods, and I'm here to encourage council to adopt Resolution 2312 in support of the constitutional right of pregnant persons, including access to reproductive healthcare and abortion services. Why? Because it signals to women and families that council values the physical, psychological, and socioeconomic well-being of the citizens of this city. Unlike many of my good neighbors here, I do not believe that we should be sweeping this issue under the rug and not talking about it. I value this conversation. We need to not pretend that this is not an issue. The Dobbs decision has restricted healthcare and reproductive rights for many, many women and families. And we can't just pretend it's going to go away by wanting to not talk about it. I've been a university professor for 22 years here in Flagstaff, very proudly. During that time, I've taught more than 4,400 students, supporting them on their path to graduation, engaged citizenship, and meaningful careers. I've raised two wonderful children I chose to bring into this world. But unfortunately, my two adult children do not have the same access to reproductive health and safe legal abortions I did when in 1986, as the result of a date rape, I became pregnant. My life of service to this community would not have been possible without free and legal access to abortion services. Your resolution does not mandate people have abortions, but instead supports the dignity of women and families to make the choice for themselves. Some of my good neighbors would want to restrict your choice. I say I do not restrict your choice, but I respect your choice to not have abortions. And I ask that you respect the choice of women and families to make that decision for themselves. And council, I did elect you for this kind of conversation, so I'm really grateful for your courage and your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Zarabin or Zerabin?
Yes.
Allison Dyer? And then Emma Schraener?
It's an honor to be here. I'm learning. I'm getting a great education today. I hope you all are as well. I'm here to make a voice known. I might not know much. I'm just a simple guy. I'm kind of an old-fashioned kind of guy. You know, I want to know what's best for our city. I know that you guys all want to know what to do, what's best for our city, for our children, and for our children's children's future as well. I don't know why we're really having this conversation. I'm just an old-fashioned kind of guy. I'm kind of wondering where all these unwanted pregnancies are coming from. Like, we forgot, you know, how this happens? Yeah? Yeah. I'm wondering why we're even having to talk about this. When I was a young man, I avoided certain kinds of behavior with women for obvious reasons. What do I know? I'm just kind of an old-fashioned kind of guy. You say there's no cost to the city. I beg to differ. I think there would be financial, emotional, devastating consequences. You can ask the councilmen for what might be our legal ramifications of being sued and open ourselves to legal lawsuits. Why would we want to set ourselves up for something like that? I don't know. When there is a devastation or when there is a devaluation of life, we're not talking about a wart here. When we devalue life at any stage, we have been deceived. Hitler was able to deceive a nation into believing that the Jews were subhuman and needed to be exterminated. So who's convinced us it's a wart or not? I also believe there's social costs, like I've already spoken about, but there's been a 1,000 percentage rate of STDs in our state over the last two years. I just read that the other day. Loss of lives, loss of values, emotional, mental losses, cost of crime going up because we've devalued life. We devalue the sanctity of life, what it means. But really, why are we having this discussion? I think that women are being ripped off. I think that if I was a man and had to go to a doctor's office and pull down my pants and have certain medical things put in me, I think there would be a lot less abortions today. Just saying. What do I know? I'm just kind of an old-fashioned kind of guy. You know? What are we doing? Are we enabling people to be irresponsible for their actions? Is that the message we want to send to our children and to our society and to our culture? I think not. I don't think that's the message we want to send to anybody. Why would we want to enable any kind of bad behavior? We don't want to do that. So make your choices well. There are consequences to your choices.
Thank you, Mark. Allison Dyer, and then Emma Schraener?
Good evening. Thank you for listening. My name is Allison Dyer, and I would like to communicate my opposition to Resolution 2023-12. Flagstaff has been my home for the past 16 years. I earned my Bachelor of Science in Nursing from NAU and have worked in primary care, urgent care, for Indian Health Services, and providing respite care for families with nonverbal children in their homes who have long-term disabilities. I now have the honor of working from home while I raise and teach my own four children. As someone who has personally considered abortion as a real option for myself, I understand the terrible vulnerability and fear that an unwanted pregnancy can cause. I also know firsthand how much of a sacrifice and challenge it is to endure pregnancy, unmedicated labor, long-term sleep deprivation, the draining of resources such as time, money, and energy that child rearing inevitably brings. So much of this resolution is so focused on the wrong thing, in the same way that I was when I was terrified of an unwanted pregnancy. I was only thinking of myself and what negative things would happen to me. The trouble is that pregnancy, whether desired or not, does not consist in a party of one. The child, however small and dependent, wherever it is located, belongs to itself in the same way, or I suppose maybe a better way to say it would be, has the right to life just as much as the mother or father does. If I had chosen the so-called right to abortion for any of my pregnancies, one of my children would not be here today. The termination of a pregnancy results in the end of a life. There is something so much more beautiful and good than avoiding the suffering associated with child rearing. Getting to witness and influence the lives of my children, some of my favorite people and my best friends, as well as overcoming the hardship of sacrifice to taste the rewards of hard-won joy and delight of parenting. I long for women to know this. Please do not pass this resolution.
Thank you. Emma Schraener, and then Christina Rainsford?
Hello again. My name is Emma Schraener, and this is the third time I am speaking in front of the city council on this issue. And I thank you for your vulnerability and your strength in supporting this resolution so far, minus one council member. And I thank the people here speaking so powerfully about this, and I'm here to do the same. I see a lot of wonderful candidates to be foster parents, and I'd love to share some stats on that. So currently in Arizona, there are close to 14,000 children in foster care. But there are only about 3,000 licensed foster families. There are nearly five children in care for every licensed foster family. And I'd like to point out to the people in this room that that's perhaps an opportunity to do something because we do need some foster families. But I'm also here to speak about this resolution. And I am here as a result of a life-saving legal abortion because my mother had an ectopic pregnancy about a year and a half before I was born. That's why I'm speaking to you. And I'm also here, as I've told you before, as a survivor of sexual assault. I'm here as a former student of NAU. I'm here as a current community organizer and member of the Flagstaff Abortion Alliance, who's been working tirelessly for months along with the other members and community members to support basic human rights. That is what is at stake here. I'm hearing a lot of references to the Holocaust, and I'm not hearing a lot of references to the impact that a forced pregnancy causes. To, like, the psychological harm that that causes. There is no scientific evidence to support that an abortion causes significant psychological harm. But there is significant evidence to support that a forced pregnancy not only increases the chance of death because a pregnancy is much more dangerous than an abortion, but it also causes incredible psychological harm. Children can also get pregnant. And I'm here in support of children. I love children. I'm not currently ready to have one. I'm here because I want to work for my community. I love this community, and I know you do too. So I'm so thankful that you have supported us so far. And I encourage you to pass this resolution. This resolution that is a statement of your support, your support for human rights, because that's what this is. It's not forcing anyone to have an abortion. So thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Christina Rainsford, and then Kyle Nitske?
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for hearing all the voices here.
Would you mind?
I sure can. Is that better? I see this worded as a statement. It was first introduced as a statement, and I would like to flip the wording on that. I believe that this actually is a narrative. And part of this narrative has to do with the criminalization or what is perceived as or what is perceived as the future criminalization as a result of Dobbs. As it says in Section 5, "The City Council supports the Flagstaff Police Department in establishing law enforcement priorities that consider the need to protect the physical, psychological and socioeconomic well-being of pregnant persons and their care providers." Section 6. "The City Council supports the Flagstaff Police Department in establishing policies that require a report of an alleged violation of Arizona ARS 362321 through 2326 that is reported to have taken place at a medical facility, be referred to the Arizona Department of Health Services for investigation and that no physical arrests be made by the Flagstaff Police Department." I stand before you saying that this isn't a statement. This is escalation of a narrative. And an escalation of a narrative does not undo what are facts. To me, the facts here is that your leadership has been entrusted by the community of Flagstaff to take care of things that really do matter, things that have been entrusted to you to protect our community and not to advance narratives that have to do with criminalization and a resolution that really has no place in our community. And because of that, I stand before you and ask you to oppose and to reject this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christina. Kyle Nitski and then Joshua Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Aslan and council members. Thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Kyle Nitski. I spoke last week in my role as the Co-Executive Director of the Arizona Students Association. But tonight, I just wanted to share as a Flagstaff resident, as your neighbor and to address council and all the community members we have here tonight as well. This community involvement is incredible. I don't think we've seen a council meeting this packed since the Climate Adaption Plan in 2019. So for folks who do not know, City Council meets every Tuesday at 3:00 PM. We also have a variety of commissions that folks can serve on. There's the Airport Commission, the Beautification and Public Art Commission, Board of Adjustment, Building and Fire Code, Board of Appeals. Essentially, there are a lot of ways to get really involved. 99% of the time, our City Council is not focusing on issues about abortion. They deal with housing and homelessness and fire and forests and water. And so I think if we had this type of community involvement every week, who knows what we could do as a city? All council meetings are live streamed and recorded. So I do want to really encourage the public here to listen to the comments from two weeks ago's. I think we had a really lot of great speakers who had a much more nuanced conversation about abortion. I grew up in conservative Gilbert, Arizona, and didn't always really have a full understanding of what abortion was and the nuances of the conversation. In Gilbert, it was very much, you know, you're the pro-life religious zealot or you're a pro-choice baby killer. And I, some of the crazy stuff we've heard today. Comparing abortion to the Holocaust, just some of the crazy anti-abortion tropes. It reminded me of growing up in Gilbert. After educating myself through college and during my legislative run, talking to women, talking to legislators and over my organizing career, it's become incredibly clear to me that abortion is health care and that any limits on abortion, any limits on health care are dangerous and deadly. And whether or not you believe that life begins at conception or in the womb or at birth, abortion bans specifically do not protect fetuses, babies or mothers. Council needs to go ahead with this resolution because our state and federal government have failed us. They've been unable to have a nuanced conversation. As a result, we have zero abortion services, i.e. health care, here in Flagstaff. Our medical providers are scared and need to be protected as much as we can. I want to thank council for moving forward with the resolution a couple of weeks ago and urge them to be brave in the face of folks who haven't taken the time to truly learn about the effects of abortion bans and to be brave in the face of the religious and conservative zealotry that has been riled up by bad faith actors. I agree with many of the comments here tonight that this resolution is mostly just a political statement. It has no legal directives for our police department. And so the council should consider looking into an ordinance to stand up to state laws and the federal government. Extraordinary times call for extraordinary actions. But in the meantime, thanks for going forward with this resolution and for putting in all the time. You guys are awesome. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Kyle. Joshua Walker and then Dr. David Berry.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Joshua Walker and I'm a pastor of Church of the Resurrection here in Flagstaff. But I'm here today not as a pastor, but as a concerned citizen. I am here today to stand up for the most persecuted minority in the United States. I'm here today to speak up for a people group that cannot speak for themselves. I'm here to speak up for the unborn. The moral issue here, contrary to what we have heard, is very simple and clear. All the arguments used to justify the senseless slaughter of this people group are only meant to obfuscate and cloud the clear moral issue at hand. Let me explain. We are told that this is a matter of choice. We are told that this is a matter that women have the right to do with their bodies what she wants. Let me ask you a question. How many arms does a six-month pregnant woman have? You probably think to yourself, that's a silly question. Of course, she has two arms. But see, in that answer, it shows that this is not a matter of a woman's body. If it were her body, then she would have four arms. But she only has two. Or let me ask you this. At what point in your life were you your mother? Yes, that's right. At what point were you your mother? Again, the answer is obvious. You were never your mother. But since that's true, then you were never her body. This is not an issue of women's rights to do with their bodies what they want. We are also told that the fetus is just a euphemism for a human baby. We are told that the fetus is not a human person. But what else could it be? The size of the baby doesn't change its personhood. If this were the case, many of you would be less human than people here who were bigger. The fact that the baby is located inside of the womb does not change its personhood. When a person is located, where they are located does not change the fact that they are a person. If I'm in this chamber or in my house or in my car, I'm still a person. The baby is still a person both inside and outside of the womb. Some say the level of development means that it's not a person. This simply can't hold water. If development makes you someone less of a person, then is my nine-year-old son less of a person because he is less developed? Finally, some say that because the baby is dependent upon its mother, it's not a person. We are all dependent on others for life, especially a newborn baby. If being dependent upon another for life means you are not a person, then there are many people groups that we would say are not people. Again, the moral issue here is crystal clear. To end the life of a baby in the womb is murder. Unless and until you can address the issues that I have raised this afternoon, you are openly supporting the murder of babies here in Flagstaff. I ask you, do the moral thing, do the right thing, do your jobs.
Thank you, Joshua. Dr. David Berry and then Julie Peering.
Thank you, council, for your service and for enduring this evening. I am Dr. David Berry. I'm the Senior Pastor of Flagstaff Christian Fellowship, an almost 100-year-old congregation of Flagstaff. I'm here today on behalf of myself and nearly the 300 people of my church. I'm here on behalf of the men and women, the young teenagers and the elderly, the unhoused and wealthy, the immigrants and residents of my church. I'm here on behalf of the white people and black people, Hispanic people, East Asian people, Islander people and Indigenous people in my church who all love each other in Jesus Christ and consider each other one united family. And as an ambassador of Jesus Christ, I stand here on behalf of the unborn people. And together, we all are in vehement opposition to proposed Resolution 202312. As has been mentioned, the mission of Flagstaff, as we've been reminded, is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. That certainly includes the most vulnerable among us who cannot defend and speak for themselves, people in the womb. While race and gender should not matter, it does in our current cultural climate. So to endorse abortion is to say that black lives matter except in the womb, that brown lives matter except in the womb, Indigenous lives matter except in the womb and on we can go. The contradiction and hypocrisy is undeniable. If feminism is in view, how is it coherent that empowered women can kill disempowered women in the womb in the name of women's rights? If we believe science is real and medical science unequivocally shows new life begins at conception, why do we not follow the science but deny it? Your sworn and stated responsibility as a council is to uphold the mission of Flagstaff. Abortion is the unjust murder of innocent life. Abortion does not protect nor enhance the quality of life for all, especially our citizens in the womb. To support this resolution tramples the very mission you swore to uphold. One last perspective. I recognize we all hold different worldviews that explain our deepest questions of life, morality and death. Politics is an expression of that and more. Many of the citizens you serve even put you in office, hold the Bible as their worldview, as has been clear this evening. Scripture declares that all who hold political office are God's servants to carry out His will, that's Romans 13, and uphold His moral law that includes each of you, whether you agree or not. God creates life in the womb and to take that life, Scripture views as an unjust murder and uniquely damnable sin. It is a forgivable sin only through repentance and trust in the saving blood of Christ. If you support and pass this resolution, understand that God sees and He knows and the very children Jesus would welcome to Himself, you bear culpability and their unjust and awful death.
Thank you, Dr. Berry. Julie Peering and then Amanda Finney.
Hey, good evening. It's now evening, I think. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my support for this resolution. I offer this support after the consideration of evidence, including from the United Nations and the World Health Organization about the necessity of reproductive rights for the well-being of women. First, the WHO states decidedly that lack of access to safe, affordable, timely and respectful abortion care and the stigma associated with abortion pose risks to women's physical and mental well-being throughout the life course. This is not a hypothesis, nor is it anecdotal evidence, but the conclusion from a global organization following the careful examination of the consequences of restricting access to safe, respectful, timely and affordable abortion care. Reproductive care includes abortion care and simply is health care. And therefore, denying access to it is as unjust as denying access to other forms of health care. Secondly, reproductive rights are absolutely integral to the human rights of women. To quote from the UN, "To be able to access their human rights and make essential decisions, women need to be able to decide freely and responsibly on the number and spacing of their children and to have access to information, education and services. When safe and legal access in abortion is restricted, women are forced to resort to less safe methods, too often with damaging or disastrous results, especially for women who are affected by poverty or marginalization, including minority women." There's been some discussion this evening regarding the mental well-being of those who choose abortion. I'm happy to report that the American Psychological Association conducted a sweeping study on just this and reported on the results in 2022. Here's the results of that study. Quote, "More than 50 years of international psychological research shows that having an abortion is not linked to mental health problems, but restricting access to safe, legal abortions does cause harm. Research shows people who are denied abortions have worse physical and mental health as well as worse economic outcomes than those who seek and receive them." End quote. And I'd be happy to share the research with you. I appreciate the positions of those who don't support this resolution and I recognize that they often come from a deeply held religious belief. I consider them my neighbors and my friends, but I very respectfully disagree that their religious beliefs should determine our community's position regarding access to abortion care that all evidence demonstrates is vital to the health, well-being and human rights of women.
Thank you, Julie. Amanda Finney and then Sanjum Awalia. And I believe that I got that wrong last time I read that name too, so I apologize. Amanda, oh, thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you very much. As said, my name is Amanda Finney. I am a teacher in the community, a former graduate of NAU. I've taught with FUSD in the past. I currently teach my own children. I'm a mother of five, a soccer mom and a very active member of this community. I could come before you tonight with personal experience. We've heard a lot of that. By knowing firsthand the trauma and lifelong consequences that abortion causes. As I am raised by a mother who has been there, with friends around her who've been there. So I don't know what the research that was referred to, but my obvious experience sees trauma and sees lifelong consequences. I also know the power of holding my own 13-week fetus, no, baby, in my own hands and admiring his perfectly formed jawline in hands and feet. Not done by my own choice, but that baby was a baby. And sad to say, that's still a legal age to abort. And yet he was fully formed, beautiful. But I'm not going to speak only on personal experience. As you have reminded us, this is not a law that you are trying to form. And we do recognize the frailty of a simple resolution. But I'm not foolish enough either to overlook the power that a simple statement of opinion overriding a city opinion can have on future lawmaking. And I want to caution you, perhaps that you assume by being voted in that you represent a majority of a city. However, there are, there is a large population, myself being one, who lives just outside of city boundaries. But we are the lifeline, the blood of the way this city functions. You see, they may not be able to vote in city elections, so their voices are truly not represented here as a majority. But they keep it running. They're the small business owners. They're the Donny Park friends. They're the ones that live in my small island of county residents. I stand for this very large population. You see, I'm, as I said, a teacher, an NAU student, a mother of five. But my husband is a small business owner. He's also an employee of Gore, which we know they're influencing the city. But is he allowed to vote in the city elections? No. So please be aware that you are making decisions about a city that we love, that we breathe our life into, that we raise our children in. And yet, you may not have been represented by our vote. So please hear us now. Please hear us now. You see, healthcare is not, is about health. It is not about death. Choice comes before the moment of conception.
Sanjum and then Susan Shapiro. And after Susan is Deborah Block.
Hi, Sanjum Awalia. And I speak here today as a mother, longstanding resident of Flagstaff and an educator and someone and a researcher who does work on the global history and politics of reproductive health. By the way, before I, you know, share my formal remarks, brief remarks, Happy Purim, Happy International Women's Day, Holi Mubarak, Happy Holi. It's Holi today. And also, as some of you may know, March is celebrated as Women's History Month here in the US. So clearly, our discussion today couldn't cosmically be better aligned. I want to open my formal remarks by thanking Mayor Daggett and members of the City Council for your strong endorsement of bodily autonomy for all and reproductive rights during the last council meeting in February. What I want to say today, in light of it also being the eve of International Women's Day, is framed globally. The US abortion conversation that is currently unfolding across the country and here is just that. It is singularly an American way of thinking about reproductive rights and abortion access in the 21st century. This is not how the world, the rest of the world, understands things, talks, debates or writes about abortion rights. Planetary conversation on abortion is at a very different place. As some of you may know, there has been a law, there's been a strong global reaction to the Supreme Court's Dobbs decision. to the Supreme Court's Dobbs decision last June. Many world leaders expressed their deep disappointment and dismay at the degree to which women's rights and reproductive rights have receded here in the U.S. Their Islamophobia notwithstanding, India and Israel actually liberalized their abortion laws in light of the Dobbs decision. In fall, when I was back home in India on a research trip, I was invited to speak at my alma mater, Jesus and Mary College, at the University of Delhi. After my presentation, I had a student ask me, she sounded puzzled. "Why in the U.S.," she asked, "as one of the older and more confident democracies of the world, is access to women's reproductive care and abortion being so severely restricted and criminalized?" Women in the Global South and North are baffled at our stand on restricting access to health care and reproductive care for all. I would argue that today we need to look to the Global South for inspiration on feminism, women's rights, and abortion rights and LGBTQI rights as well. As you can see from the forest of green color in the room and outside, we wear this in solidarity with and in celebration of women and people of Argentina who recently won the right to free, safe, and legal abortion in their country. Let me end by reiterating my support for the resolution. I also want to urge the Council to please vote yes on it as a way to better align the U.S. reproductive politics and our cultural and democratic commitments with the larger world that we are a part of. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Sanjum. Susan Shapiro, Deborah Block, and then Janine.
I'd like to thank the Council for voting to advance the discussion about this resolution. At the prior meeting, you all acknowledged the bravery of the citizens who came and shared some very personal stories. I'd like to thank you for responding with some personal stories of your own. I know it wasn't easy to talk about sexual assault, ectopic pregnancy, or the experience of not having equal rights or having rights taken away. We were moved by your comments as much as you were moved by ours, so again, thank you. The fact is, this resolution is in step with the views of the majority of Arizonians. The nonpartisan Independent Research Organization, PRRI, released a major study just a few weeks ago that found that 62% of Arizonians support abortion legality, and most are all cases, 62%. Only 7% say abortion should be illegal in all cases. It was also noted at the prior meeting that we elected a Republican majority legislature and that they speak for us. But the district I live in, represented by Wendy Rogers, leans Republican by 20 points, 20 points, hardly a fair contest. The people of this state elected a Democratic governor, attorney general, and secretary of state, all of whom ran on a pro-choice platform. The minority view, I get it, it's deeply held, fervently held, but that does not give them the right to force their personal religious beliefs on the rest of us. This is a personal decision. Like Jim said last time, what the hell is the state doing getting involved in this? Not only do the values that are reflected in the resolution align with the values of the majority of Arizonians, they advance the Council's mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. The Flagstaff Abortion Alliance supports the resolution, and we ask you to vote to adopt it. But I want to close with a comment Deborah Harris made at the last meeting. She said, "I know what it's like personally not to have rights, or to have your rights taken away, or not have the inalienable rights that other people had. It was people like those of you here tonight who made it possible for a person like me to sit on the dais and listen, to be able to sit on the dais and listen to this conversation. It was people like those of you here tonight who helped us secure the rights I enjoy today." Mayor and City Council, it's people like you who by making this statement of our city's values move us toward a society where people have the freedom to control decisions about their own bodies. And to that I say, bravo.
Thank you, Susan. Deborah Block and then Janine.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you again for your vigorous, heartfelt support in directing the city attorney to draft this resolution. I'd like to respond to some of the comments that were made in our last meeting. To quote, "Abortion hurts women emotionally, spiritually, and often physically." And, quote, "60% of abortions are performed on women who are forced, coerced, and pressured into abortion," end quote. The studies that propagate these beliefs come from a handful of people who peddle faux-science to a willing audience. They've postulated a causal link between abortion and mental distress, post-abortion syndrome, they call it. This notion has been rejected by the American Psychological Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and then Surgeon General C. Everett Coop. As witnesses, they have been rejected as not credible in court, and their analysis is documented as replete with methodological errors and is not replicable. Replication is the root of scientific merit. Numerous credible studies have debunked these statements again and again. For example, the APA released a report stating that no scientific evidence was found to link abortion to mental distress. Another longitudinal study published in 2020 found that 95% of women report that having an abortion was the right decision for them over five years after the procedure. A 2013 study found only 1.2% cite pressure from family or friends as the reason for choosing abortion. And a 2018 review of reproductive coercion, where there is intimate partner violence, found that women are more often coerced into continuing a pregnancy, not terminating one. These are the consistent results of countless studies conducted by actual doctors and qualified researchers. Quote, "Women do die from legal abortions, and that includes the abortion pill. Pregnancy-related mortality is far higher than abortion-related mortality. The CDC determined that from 2013 to 2018 maternal deaths ranked at 17.35 per 100K live births, where abortion deaths ranked at 0.41 per 100K legal abortions. The safety profile for medication abortion is similar to that of surgical abortion. Both are safer than continuing a pregnancy term or using other common medications. Statistics show that more women are harmed, forced to remain in abusive relationships, and die from being denied an abortion. Actual science supports abortion as necessary and essential health care. Please reaffirm your support by voting yes on adopting this resolution." Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Janine and Barbara Sui and then Dr. Ari Burford, I believe.
I was going to invite you all over for Irish too, but I think it's going to be burned by the time I get home. I'm the product of the love of Francois Claire Soucy and Tyrone Tyrus Kelly. She was opera and literature, and he was math and baseball, and the only thing they had in common was 11 children. But that's a lot to have in common. I'm the first child to graduate from college. I graduated from University of Florida, mona cum laude, fiebita capa. I did postgraduate work at Oxford University and other universities. I've taught at two universities, three community colleges, a handful of high schools. I even did the marine thing and did middle school. All right. I've taught the Federalist Papers, the Declaration of Independence, Common Sense, and one of my favorite phrases is from Thomas Jefferson, and he says that "we as citizens have the opportunity to pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." The word happiness actually comes from the Greek eudemia, which means human flourishing. I think the most vulnerable citizen in the United States is the man-child or the woman-child in the womb, and so I advocate for their right to life, liberty, and human flourishing. Thank you so much for having this really important conversation. It's as divisive as the Civil War conversation was in the time of Lincoln, and I've learned a great deal. Let's practice generous listening, and I salute everyone who came here tonight, and I'm going to invite you to my St. Patrick's Day party. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, are you okay?
Yeah, the ike prophet's wearing on.
So I have two cards here for Victoria Cook and on the same item. And are these the same Victoria Cook? It looks like it. Okay, so I'm not going to call Victoria Cook up again because she has already spoken. Okay, Barbara Sui and then Dr. Ari Buford.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Barbara Sui, and I have served as an Assistant Attorney General for the great state of Arizona, and now have the pleasure, along with my husband, of pastoring the great congregation, Northland Christian Assembly, here in Flagstaff for the past six-plus years. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us as citizens to share our views, and thank you for what you do to serve the people of this community and to provide leadership. It's not easy being the leader. It's a heavy responsibility, and so thank you for undertaking to do what you do to lead. I oppose this proposed resolution. As a member of this community now for going on seven years, I've come to love and appreciate the beautiful community of Flagstaff, and this resolution is not good for our community. We don't want to be a community known for promoting death. Freedom is good. It's critical to every democracy, but not at the expense of human life. As Council members, you represent me and my family, the community of believers that we pastor, and many others in this community who oppose the taking of human life through abortion. This resolution is unnecessary, and it's offensive to many citizens in this community. As I understand it, this resolution is solely a political statement, and it has no governing effect whatsoever and cannot, by definition, help anyone in this city. Respectfully, making political statements is neither the responsibility nor the appropriate role of this council, and making political statements that offend many of us in the community serves no legitimate purpose. Finally, I ask the honorable members of this council to consider those in this community who are survivors of abortion, or those born despite their mother having been counseled to abort. What does this proposed resolution say to them? Do they count as members of this community? Does our government value them? Does our government respect their lives? I submit that their very lives demonstrate the evil and the tragedy of taking life through abortion. Let's not make a political statement that doesn't help our community and instead serves to marginalize and devalue the lives of our own. I urge you to vote against this resolution, and thank you again for hearing us out.
Thank you, Barbara. Dr. Ari Buford and then Shelby Patton and then Sam Copeland.
Thank you so much for taking this time tonight, well, now it's night, all of this time that you have taken sitting here without a break, and I guess I'll keep it quick. So first of all, I urge you to support the resolution, and I'm not here to convince you or anyone else here to have an abortion or to adopt the spiritual beliefs that I have. And I want to also make the point that several people outside were saying that this afternoon doesn't represent all of Flagstaff. I think we can understand that a lot of people are at work today and couldn't make it for lots of other reasons. And ultimately, I just want to say that we should not force people to give birth. We should not force people to give birth for any reason, and people have said this before, but I feel the need to say it again, that, you know, that people are raped and become pregnant. And I am not here to tell my story, but I will say that I was raped by my grandfather and might have needed an abortion. I'm glad that I wasn't forced to have a baby, and I don't think anyone else should be. But I don't want to go into the details of my life story that way, but more as a point to say that this is a safety issue for our community, and I hope that we can resolve to allow people to not be forced to have children here in this city. And then the last one thing I wanted to say is, well, aside from, it's hard to public speak, it's, it is, so anyway, if people, the last, especially when it's something that involves so many emotions, right? But the last thing I felt that it was important to say is that it's not for, it's not for me as a white person to tell women of color what to do with their bodies, and I don't think anyone should really tell people what to do with their bodies, including me. So therefore, the choice. Thanks.
Thank you. Shelby Patton, Sam Copeland, and Christina Blanchard.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you very much. I find myself reminded of my favorite show, Parks and Rec, while sitting here. Thank you for taking the time to let us all come and speak with you, and thank you for not taking a break and letting us all speak to you. I'm here tonight because I do oppose this resolution, but I also oppose the way it's being discussed. There's a lot of division, confrontation, accusations going around, and I really do not appreciate this hard topic being discussed that way. Even the ones in support of this resolution have admitted that they believe that the unborn is a human being, so we need to move beyond this issue. The root of this problem is that women are being lied to and told that we cannot handle motherhood unless it happens in the perfect way and the perfect time, and I believe that this is very offensive to me as a woman. We're also told that if we do become pregnant, and it's not our choice, that we could bring a child into this world and they will have an awful life, and I believe that is a very hurtful lie to us women. This resolution reads as an attempt to not actually help any women. To me, I see it as kind of literally taking these women and these children and disposing them. Instead of affirming them, caring for them, and supporting them, such as places like pregnancy crisis, crisis pregnancy centers do, adoptions agencies, and foster families, we are just trying to kind of get rid of the problem so we can kind of shove them away. I believe that instead of encouraging women to destroy the life of their child because they believe that they're going to destroy their own lives, it would be better as a city if we focused on more supporting these women through things such as adoption, foster care, crisis pregnancy centers, and just coming together as a community. We don't have to rely on such big things, just like someone previously said. There are a ton of children in foster care, and not as many people sign up to be foster families. There's lots of things that can be done, and I believe the community needs to step up and not just show up to council meetings and kind of spew angry things about how God is going to dispose of them or damn them, and I think we need to step up as a community and help each other. So instead of supporting this resolution, I think we should instead, you guys should flop to more supporting the women in this community and the families that would help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Sam Copeland, Christina Blanchard.
I think my message perhaps is more for everyone, not just the council. Brothers and sisters, I'd like to share a better vision than the resolution the City Council has brought forward. Unfortunately, it is based on a distortion of the term reproductive health care, where the true intent is the exact opposite of what those words mean, and this resolution promotes the bold lie that women would actually benefit from abortion in any way whatsoever. On top of that, it insults our law enforcement, suggesting their participation in this corruption. So instead, I eagerly invite you to express, excuse me, experience life to its full, where intercourse occurs in a trusted relationship and it's green, free from the slavery free from the slavery of chemical-laden sex that supports multiple greedy industries. Embrace an experience of life truly free to recognize and participate with your entire bodies the way they are supposed to work from the beginning. When you are free to exercise your will over your passions, the chains that bind your heart can be thrown off. And then you can experience what is embedded on your soul, this desire in each of us that wants to be fully known and loved. Loved. Love that is to will the good of the other for the sake of the other. I know, what I'm suggesting is not easy. So lean into the grace of your Maker and trust Him to present to you the next best choice in this struggle. And it will be a struggle. But realize, you were not made for comfort. You were made for greatness. As a healthcare professional, I attempted to review your cited resources. It took me to the entire Dobbs versus Jackson Supreme Court docket. I did not find your reference. I did find, however, the brief of 240 scholars and professionals and pro-life feminist organizations that put forward solid reasons why the available research out there is deeply flawed in the promotion of this resolution. I conclude within an admonition and a reminder from Padraig Pío. Do not fear. Jesus is more powerful than all hell. At the invocation of His name, every knee in heaven, on earth, and in hell must bend before Jesus. This is a consolation for the good and a terror for evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Christina Blanchard and then Allison Crane. Christina Blanchard.
Mayor, she may have had to leave.
I'm sorry?
She may have left already. We've had a couple that mentioned that.
Okay. Allison Crane and then Diana Coleman.
Hi. My name's Allison. I am a Flagstaff resident. I go to college here. I've been here for three years. I love this place. I intend to live here the rest of my life. I recognize many of you from some community organizing stuff that I have been a part of. This is a very important place to me. And I think I'm kind of unsure of what to say at this point. I mean, we've heard plenty of arguments from the point of view of religion. And I don't think it can be stated enough that separation of church and state is a thing. You might have deeply held religious beliefs and that is your right. So abide by them. Do that. Live your life as you see fit. But it is the job of the government of the United States to protect the rights of people to live their individual lives in the ways that they feel most comfortable. So I guess that is what I am here to encourage you all to say. I am very much in favor of this as, well, to put it frankly, you know, we've heard a lot of people talking about the theoretical children who have been aborted. I am only alive now because my mother got an abortion before me. Because she was able to go on to have two children who are now happy, who are now going out into the world and living lives that they are comfortable with. Just do the right thing for people who are alive, not for people who may be alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Diana Coleman and then Adam Shimonie.
Good evening, Mayor Daggett and Flagstaff City Council. I'm going to wear several hats tonight as I speak. First of all, I'm a professor of Religious Studies. Do this for a living. I study religion. We have not heard the religious side tonight, as I've heard several people say. We've heard from a thin, select fringe of conservative Christianity that doesn't represent all of Christianity. One of the things I always teach my students in intro to religion courses is that religion is internally diverse. Christianity is incredibly internally diverse. Okay? And not only Christianity in the United States, but global Christianity. Lots of diversity. We've heard that tonight. And then there are many different religious traditions within Flagstaff and within the United States. And in Flagstaff, for instance, we have the Jewish community. Within the Jewish community, right, it's incumbent upon a woman to seek an abortion with the counsel of her religious community, her rabbi, if it is going to be damaging to her physically or emotionally. Incumbent upon her, right? Not a choice. The mother's life is always preferred. And we're talking about potential life when we talk about the fetus, not life. I speak also as someone who got pregnant in 1976 as a 15-year-old. I had access to Planned Parenthood and to have an abortion. And I actually was able to gather the funds. I had supportive people. I chose not to have an abortion. It was my choice. I was able to really think through it. I was fortunate in that way. However, I will tell you, the experience of having a child at 15 and becoming an emancipated minor at 16 and raising that child, it was not the Christian community, the pious, who stood up and came and helped me. It was mostly people on the fringes of society, on one way or another, who came through to support me. But when I had children, my daughters later in life and with my son, it was an experience I would have never wanted for them. I would have never wanted them to have that experience of single parenthood at 15 in such an unforgiving country. So we do have separation of church and state, right? We have the Establishment Clause. So this religious-inflected dialogue, I think, is inappropriate to be forced on and also very disingenuous. I would also like to dedicate tonight to Savita Halan-Panavar, who in 2012, in Ireland, very Catholic country, died of sepsis. She was 31 years old and she died over the course of many days. And that is why abortion is now legal in Ireland.
Thank you, Diana. Adam and then Mia Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City staff, and members of the public. Really appreciate you all taking the time to hear from the public and that the public is here tonight. You know, I really appreciate, Mayor, your leadership in maintaining a respectful discussion and a respectful space. And remember, I really appreciate the members of the public in keeping that respect alive and well throughout this discussion, because this is an important discussion. And I'm really glad that this is a space where we're hearing all angles and all sides of this argument. I want to thank everyone who shared their very powerful and moving stories, arguments, and statements. Both last conversation and this conversation, there's been a lot of vulnerable and important conversation that's been had. And I'm grateful for that. As someone who can't get pregnant, I want to say that I do believe in the right to healthcare. This very important decision that we're discussing today is between an individual and their doctor. The government does not have a role in that discussion and that decision, in my opinion. I believe that the recent Supreme Court decision is an act of state violence and I'm opposed to that ruling. Forced birth is state violence. I support the City Council following the actions taken by Phoenix and Tucson and appreciate your leadership in discussing this and hopefully adopting this resolution. I know it's just a resolution, but it's meaningful. And as others have said, it leads to bigger discussions and bigger change. And then lastly, I just want to express, I heard a public comment earlier tonight expressing that if this meeting started a little bit later and more people could have been available to be here, then more would be. And that's a sentiment I've felt for years. And I encourage this council at a later date to pick that discussion back up and look at, starting at 4:00 and at 6:00 PM, like we used to. Thank you all. Discussion tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Mia Rodriguez and then Remy Ramirez.
Hi again. My name is Mia. I'm a student at NAU and I'm an active member of the Flagstaff Abortion Alliance. Excuse me. I spoke on February 21st and I'm here to speak again. I'm still in favor of this resolution. There is no change without action. I said it last time, I will say it again, and I will always believe this, that abortion is healthcare. Abortion should only be the choice of the person who is pregnant and they should not have any kind of dictated, they should not have any of their choices dictated by somebody who is not going through what they're going through. We all have unique experiences and that is singular to each of us. But the choice to have an abortion or not have an abortion should not be dictated by anyone who is not going through what this person's going through. It should not be dictated by personal belief, religious guilt, or anything of the sort. Abortion is always controversial. It will always be a topic that brings division. There is no way to discuss this without disagreeing. That's inevitable. There is a way to be more aware about the tides that abortion has. It is a solution, but at the same time, it is, if this resolution is not passed, it is affecting minorities, is affecting LGBTQIA+ community, is affecting not just women, but anybody who doesn't have access to these, what I've been hearing this evening, a lot of, explore the other options. Go look at, you know, everything else before you consider abortion. Sometimes these other options, for minorities especially, are not a good option either. Sometimes this abortion is the best choice. And I beg you, please pass this resolution because it is so important to not just our community, but to others as well. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Mia. Remy Ramirez and then Leslie Hansen. Remy Ramirez. Leslie Hansen and then Brian Skoronsky. Are you Leslie?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. I've never spoken at one of these before, so excuse my nervousness. I will try my best. I'm Leslie. I am a student at NAU, majoring in sociology and minoring in queer studies and community engagement. I've been living in Flagstaff for about three years now. A lot of these arguments presented tonight against the resolution have been based on religious ideals and very personal stories. And I think it is very brave to present that argument here. And I do appreciate people coming out here and us being in a state and a environment where people can share their opinions openly. But I do think these ideas are, while valid, should not dictate our laws, especially because of, as my lovely friend Allison mentioned before, the separation of church and state. I don't think religious ideals or quotes from the Bible should dictate exactly how we dictate bodies in this country or in this city. A lot of times, the words "to protect and enhance the lives of all" have been brought up tonight. And I agree. I think that is a very important aspect of this City Council and one that I know you all believe in fervently. And I do believe that we should enhance and protect the lives of pregnant people, parents, and children. And a ban on abortion doesn't do this. It harms many, many lives disproportionately affecting lower-income folks. I also, as people have brought up before, want to acknowledge that a lot of people couldn't be here because of, not only because of the early start time, but also because we don't know how long this is going to go on. It got to a point where I was kind of worried if I would be even able to stay and say something up here. But I'm glad I was lucky enough to be here. But there are a lot of people who will be disproportionately, are disproportionately affected by an abortion ban who can't be here because they lack the resources or don't have the time or money to come out here. So I don't think that all of Flagstaff is being represented tonight. But sometimes you can't really avoid that. But I don't believe that people who aren't greatly affected by this, I don't believe that people who will, like, who are not affected by a ban on abortion, who are who... There have also been a lot of people who have been speaking for the black community in Flagstaff despite not being part of it. And I found that very interesting. But I do, I want to finish up my 13 seconds here and say that I know this resolution is just a statement. It won't change laws. It won't grant access to abortion. But I think it will show support to the people that really need it. And I hope you will make the right decision tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Brian Skoronsky and then Karissa Semma?
Hi, thank you for having me. This is how y'all spend your Tuesday nights. Man.
It's fun, isn't it?
So thank you for allowing me to speak, honorable council members, honorable mayor. A couple of things. I was reading a, three minutes, and I'm tired. An article in Evolution News by Dr. Michael Egner. And Michael Egner, Evolution News, read this article, it's wonderful. And he goes on, and I didn't bring it with me, I had three minutes, I couldn't have time to read it anyway. Wonderful article. And the bottom line is, life begins, according to him, at conception. And so, me not knowing, I'm, interesting, you know, and he's atheist most of his life, educated life. And now, apparently he's not, I found out today. But this religious thing, I just want to say, that's a farce to me to say there's religious people and then, I don't care if they're religious or not. The bottom line is, is this fetus a human? Or is it a human fetus? Or is it just a blob or whatever? You know, and at what point is it a blob? I'll use my, obviously, I didn't go to school or I didn't pay attention. Well, is it a blob? When is it a human being? At the point of conception, one week, two weeks, four, whatever, you know? It's already approved for 15 weeks. So what I'm hearing on the one side is like, boy, that sounds, I'm trying to, what? I don't understand the 15 weeks. You want 16, 17? You already had 15, you know, or 14, I guess. But, so that, if a person believes there's a creator of the universe, what does that have to do with anything? Why do you hold that against them? A person doesn't agree, doesn't believe or agnostic, there's not, what does that have to do? We're talking about, is this fetus a human being? Or is it not a human being, you know? And the bottom line is, before you sign your pen to anything, make sure you know, because you never can. Is that a human being? Is it a human-being fetus or not? And that's something to read, that's just something to, I just, I believe in God and I used to hate Him, but I've changed. But the bottom line is, I was always against this because nobody knows if that's a human being. You cannot say, I know that's a human being. Nobody. So some of these doctors can, I don't know how they can. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Karissa Semma? And then Jasmine V.
Hi, my name is Karissa Serna and I am strongly for this resolution. I'm a student at NAU and I'm a biological science major. I'm an 18-year-old female who has to fear every day for my own rights to my body. This is not due to my own actions or decisions, but due to the decisions of other peoples and their actions. As someone who has experienced sexual assault when I was only 14 years old and I turned to the church after it happened, I was shamed and told that it was my fault. So using things such as the Bible should not necessarily be taken into consideration for this decision, especially if it's under one specific religion. And I strongly encourage to keep the separation of church and state. While I have never had to have an abortion and I truly hope that I never will have to, it gives me comfort knowing that I am the one that would be able to make the decision for myself and nobody else would be doing it for me. Bringing up points such as adoption and foster care systems that are not fully supported and acceptable in the United States seems a little bit hypocritical on my, for like, from my perspective. There are, on average, 14,890 children in foster care in Arizona alone. And 117,446 as of 2020 waiting to be adopted in the United States. And this number will only continue to grow if accessible, sorry, accessible abortions and safe abortions are taken away. accessible abortions and safe abortions are taken away, which will also increase the number of deaths caused by unsafe abortions. And as a woman, that truly does terrify me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Karisa. Jasmine V. and then Stephanie Petry?
Hi there, Mayor Daggett, council members. I want to start by saying thank you so much for the last meeting that we had where you really spoke up in support of this abortion resolution. And you named that there were a myriad of reasons why the council makes these values statements. There's, you know, any number of values statements that are made for particular Black History Month, Women's History Month, and so what we're asking is for something along those lines as well. I don't want to take too much of your time, it's been a long night, and I've already made my statement at the last meeting. But I do want to refute a couple of, a bit of the misinformation that's been shared tonight. I myself am a single mother of two children, I have a 14 and a 12-year-old. I began a lot of my work as a family advocate in Southeast Alaska where women were having challenges getting the healthcare, their healthcare needs met. And so it's led me through this course in my life where I've heard a lot of stories from people who have been forced to birth under very dire situations. I also worked as a social worker at Arizona's Children's Association right here in Flagstaff. And I can attest to the number of children that are in foster care right now. And I can attest to the ways that these foster children and the children in the adoption system are highly underserved. When a child turns 18, they are no longer given adoption services after that point, so they're called aging out. At that point, they are removed from their families and they are forced in situations where they are forced to care for themselves even though their life circumstances would have made them victim to being behind in school with other, other various issues. I think that, that this argument that there's a hope crisis center fails to highlight the fact that these centers are not run by healthcare professionals. They're run like a nonprofit adoption agency. A lot of children who, here in our community, you know, are, most of the children in foster care with families are under SNAP services. And just last week, the Biden administration had to re-nag on the benefits that they had allotted families during the pandemic. Pregnant mothers cannot afford their healthcare needs. There is a formula shortage. We do not have paid family care. And so the services that this community claims that are here are not here. So thank you so much.
Thank you Jasmine. Stephanie Petry and Dr. Jim Dorman?
Hello, good evening, City Council, Mayor Daggett. My name is Stephanie Petry and I'm a resident here of Flagstaff. I'm not part of a group or an organization. I'm a mom and I've raised my son here. I do agree with my neighbors that this is a family-friendly environment. But I also want to state that both sides of the argument, and I am in favor of the resolution and I encourage the passing of the resolution, that abortion is reproductive healthcare, that all women are guaranteed and should be guaranteed to have and a choice of their own body. I also believe in basic human rights, in our right for clean water, shelter, food, and the basic human right for my body or any woman's body. And I believe in a basic human right that has its beginnings for people to have the right to say what is important for them. A woman's body is important. What she wants to do with her body is between her and her physician. A human, basic right in abortion should be available to anyone. Reproductive healthcare should be available to all women. I do believe that this is a conversation for the city council and I encourage the passing of the resolution. And I'm happy to be here as a part of this conversation and I thank you all very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you Stephanie. Dr. Jim Dorman?
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for the service that you do. My name is Jim Dorman, I've lived in the community since 1984. My doctorate is in religious studies, so I don't want to appear that I come from the medical field, but I did spend 25 years in various positions of hospital board work, having chaired Flagstaff Medical Center Board and working on Northern Arizona Healthcare Board. So there's, there's a couple of things that I've set back that I, I just wanted to note. Yes, when we come together and we have resolutions, we are talking about values. And whatever resolutions are passed, those values become binding on us as citizens. Sometimes that's majority, sometimes that's minority. If this is passed, in which I'm in opposition to, I have to live in a community that states a value that I completely disagree with. So sometimes, you know, people are concerned that the minority imposes values on the majority. That's how we feel also on the other side. The second thing is, is I've, I've heard the foster care support. Just as a note, I work with a coalition of churches and I also work with a coalition of, with individual churches that partner with AZ127. This started in 2015 in Coquenino County and that we know of, there's been no need communicated by the state of Arizona through the foster care program that has not been met, having been presented, that's not supported by the state in the current foster care families. We have not achieved our goal to empty the foster care program, which is our ultimate goal in doing that, to be a part of it. So with that, let me just hit a couple of statements with the remaining time that I have. I've counseled many throughout the years on whether to end a life or to continue a life to term. And I can't tell you the number of times that I've worked with families that made their decisions, that looked back over it and we see their children and, and how things have turned out that they could not believe would have been a part of that. I've also counseled many women and I, in doing that, I was very inexperienced at that and I had a big learning curve. And contrary to the psychological studies that have been quoted, I found that many women will come and see me between 35 and 45 years of age experiencing depression. We work with the medical community, make sure it's not clinical or medical in basis. And, and I found that there's two primary reasons. One is an unresolved decision regarding abortion or sexual abuse. My concern is, that I keep hearing is that reproductive healthcare will not be met. My understanding is, even though I'm opposed to the concept, that the state of Arizona is already legally 14 weeks. And so we're not denying anyone that reproductive healthcare that they would like. And so with that, I stand in opposition, thank you for your time.
I'm going to put out another call for Christina Blanchard and another call for Remy Ramirez. And we have some online commenters.
Mayor and Council, I have Christina Barkley. Christina, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I appreciate your time. My name is Christina Barkley. I am a resident here in Flagstaff. I wanted to come and voice my opposition to this resolution as well. Since the city council feels it's necessary to make a statement and adopt a resolution regarding the Dobbs versus Jackson Supreme Court decision, I also felt like it was equally important for me to speak up on behalf of Flagstaff residents who do not agree with this statement in the resolution. I also want to speak up on behalf of the most vulnerable in our city, as many, many, many have already done already. And those are the unborn babies. And they need and deserve our protection as well. While no one wants to limit women's access to healthcare, this access must not be in exchange for destroying human life. Additionally, the resolution speaks to the financial stability of women denied abortions. Are we really trying to argue here that we should support killing innocent lives to possibly keep a woman in a more financially stable position? Is that really a good use of an argument for this position? I don't think so. If we want to talk about financial security, we ought to talk about investing money in programs that tangibly benefit to educate and lift women up out of these circumstances. This is not a religious argument, in my view. This is a moral argument, one that we ought to take very seriously from a moral perspective. The final thing I do want to say too, is that the term pregnant persons quote unquote, which is the language that's used in this resolution, is personally an affront to women. This terminology is one of the latest buzz phrases purposefully used to virtue signal to an incredibly small minority of people. Every person on this planet knows the truth that a man is a man and a woman is a woman. And these are two distinct categories and that men cannot get pregnant. Therefore, the use of the term pregnant persons only serves to purposefully promulgate confusion and to denigrate women. Those who use this term, including the city council, seek to actively tear down the unique nature and purpose of women and to obscure fundamental truth. I believe it's shameful and the use of this phrase when speaking about women and the miracle of pregnancy should be vehemently condemned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next online commenter?
Our next online commenter is Zoe. Zoe, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Thank you, I'm Zoe. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I want to remind everyone that the American government has a separation of church and state. I think that should be included in your decision, no matter what your personal beliefs are. As a side note and history fact, conservative women were running pro-choice marches before 1976 when they wanted Democratic Catholics to vote for their Republican nominee and have been pro-life thereafter. Anyways, the UN says that forced pregnancy is a crime against humanity and has slammed the US Supreme Court's decision overturning Roe v. Wade, saying it disproportionately affects racial and ethnic minorities from accessing safe abortion. Many human rights organizations, including Global Justice Center, Pregnancy Justice, National Birth Equity Collaborative, Amnesty International USA, Human Rights Watch, Physicians for Human Rights, and others have asked the UN to act on this crime against humanity. I think it's important that Flagstaff supports this resolution, continues to stay on the right side of history that fights for all human rights. As a Flagstaff resident, I moved here because of Flagstaff beliefs. I feel safer holding my girlfriend's hand in public here than I do in other Arizona cities. I'd feel less safe if this resolution was not supported by the mayor and council members, as will many other women and people who can get pregnant, or like Christina says, pregnant people. As a town with a college/university, I think this resolution can impact future college students' decisions if they feel safe coming to NAU compared to the other two universities when the other two major cities have supported a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another commenter?
Our next commenter is Ben. Ben, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Yeah, yeah, good afternoon. My kids wanted to share something as they, they found out what has been allowed in our country for a number of years and, kids, what have you learned about that? What would you like to say?
You should never kill babies. Babies are children of God.
And you? What do you have to say Emily?
Um, you should always allow, if someone doesn't want their baby, they should just put it up for, or, um, the orphanage so someone else can help that person, but they shouldn't just kill it. Because every child is made from God's image like you and me.
Yeah, and from, from way of own personal testimony, I come from, from a very far background, far-left background, and it was in 2013 when we were pregnant with our first child and we were so excited and we're looking at all the developments that were happening to our child. And I was walking into a Lowe's and had realized that we would be able to kill that child if we wanted to. And I was so crushed by that reality that, that I have spent years advocating for the unborn and I would just implore you to please consider caring for our unborn neighbors and loving them well. And that's, that's what I'd like to share and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have one more commenter. We have Eric Nicholas. Eric, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think that quite a few of the commenters here have said that the, the religious separation of church and state is somehow relevant here, but I just think that's kind of a ridiculous notion. It's actually rather condescending and insulting to assert that only religious people could possibly be against this. It's, it's absolutely insane to think that people can't just look at this logically and think that you're not murdering people. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you Eric. Any other commenters? Okay, before we open it up to discussion among the council members, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to come out here and thank you for speaking to us. As a couple of speakers mentioned, it is nerve-wracking to speak before council. I have many, many years of speaking before council and I don't know that I ever became not nervous doing it. So thank you for sharing your thoughts, your perspectives, your experiences, and thank you for being respectful of each other so that we could have this conversation. Oh, we have another online commenter? Or was that from before?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, that was from before.
Okay, thank you. All right, so council member Matthews would like to make a comment.
Thank you Mayor, and I want to echo what you said about just thanking everyone who showed up today and shared their views. This is, again, a very emotionally charged view. I don't think anyone's comments probably changed the other person's point of view on this. One thing that was said last time we discussed this was that it was important for us to let the community know that we hear them. And definitely tonight, we had the other part of the community show up. And I heard some comments about, well, we shouldn't mix religion into this, but those are the points of view of our community members. And it's not that, I, I don't think that it was about, well, this is a religious thing or a God thing, so you need to be shamed into making a decision. This is my point, the people speaking, this is their beliefs and we, they are a part of the community. I was challenged in one of the hundreds of emails that we received on this to, they asked me, why don't you say whether you're pro-life or pro-choice? And, you know, I disagree with that because one of our, our main responsibility is to represent the citizens of Flagstaff and not necessarily our points of view, although we are all human and we're going to have different points of view and different things that we're passionate about. I heard a lot of comments tonight about, you know, please protect our- I heard a lot of comments tonight about, you know, please protect our right to choose. We're against bans on abortion. But the reality is, and I'll say it again, that in Arizona, abortion is allowed to 15 weeks. And I pulled up on the CDC, if you know me at all, you know I'm a researcher. And I pulled up on the CDC website. And over 98% of abortions performed in the United States last year were under 16 weeks. And also, in our recitals, there was something that was, I felt a little misleading, where it said that in our view, as a matter of policy, the narrow medical emergency exception in the Senate bill, 1164, does not adequately protect pregnant persons. So I looked up what that said, and it actually just says, a physician can make a determination that a woman's life is in jeopardy or could be harmed. And in that regards, can make a decision for an abortion past the 15-week gestation. And they just have to write a statement and turn it in. So a lot of the arguments tonight were, I felt a little misguided because they are already covered. And so we can argue pro-life, pro-abortion. But the fact remains that for the majority of 98, 99% of the people who seek abortion, they are already covered. It's not banned. I think when we got the petition last year, it was filed because we were still undecided or undetermined what law on the state books was going to go into effect. And at the time, there was an old law that was put on the books when we were still a territory that banned all abortion. And since then, that has been decided in the courts. And that law is not effective anymore. And so I was surprised that we were still talking about this. You know, I respect all of our citizens' decisions and their desires. Your abortion rights are covered. Whether I agree with them or not is irrelevant. And I think that just the showing tonight of the people that are opposed to a resolution and feeling offended and stating that they're going to lose trust in our local government because we're making such a political stance that doesn't have any legal standing. It just makes a divisive statement and will alienate a good portion. Whether it's a religious belief or not, it doesn't matter. There's people for abortion, there's people against abortion. And I think that this is a really good opportunity for us just not to make a stand and withdraw the resolution because we will only offend a big portion of our community. And it's not like, oh, my gosh, you know, we've got to stand up for people's abortion rights because we have a complete ban. We don't have a complete ban. And so I would hope that our council will see that there is another part of our community besides the people that are for abortion and that we just withdraw the resolution totally.
Thank you, council member Matthews. Who would like to speak next? Council member McCarthy.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I've sat through a lot of testimony and I've been taking some notes. We got a lot of emails on this too, and on both sides of the issue. This meeting, probably most of the people were against the resolution. The meeting we had, when was it, two weeks ago or one week ago? I forget. Two weeks ago, okay. Most of the people in that audience were strongly in support of the resolution. So as I noted two weeks ago, abortion is never an easy decision. And no one ever makes that decision lightly. Sometimes, unfortunately, abortion makes sense for medical or other reasons. For instance, a 12-year-old girl can get pregnant before she even understands what's going on. If this were just about consenting adults, that would be a whole different thing. Do we think that a 12-year-old girl should be forced to have a child? I don't think so. Another reason is non-conceivable sex. Sometimes, things happen on dates where where men or boys force themselves on women and they get pregnant. And I had another thought. Who makes the decision? So for the people that don't think abortion should ever happen, admittedly, we have the 15-week ban. But just for the sake of discussion, for those who make for those that think that we should never allow abortion, I'll ask the question, who makes the decision? If some boy or man rapes a girl, are we going to allow him to make the decision that that child should, that woman or that girl should be forced to have that child? So for persons that are against abortion, I suggest that you don't have one. I respect your right to make that personal decision. It's, as I said before, it's not a decision that should be made at the state legislature. Someone, one of the anti-abortion people tonight, I don't remember who it was, but it was tonight, said that there's differing opinions on this issue. Well, that's obvious. But one side, the people that say pro-choice, they're saying it shouldn't, I'm not going to make that decision for you. The other side is saying, I want to make that decision for you. So I am supportive of this resolution. And, you know, maybe the wording isn't exactly perfect. But if I, I would probably add it a couple little things. But basically, I'm in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, council member McCarthy. Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, and thank you so much to the public. I really want to authentically make it known that I very much appreciate the dialogue we've had tonight. I'm very proud of our process, of our country and our democracy for creating a safe, healthy place for us to have conversations like this, even if they can get heated and do get heated. It's just something that I really, really, really inherently, intrinsically value. And I appreciated hearing from all of you tonight. I appreciated hearing a fuller spectrum of philosophies and ideas and opinions. And I appreciated you personally coming up and sharing those thoughts. You know, we talked about this last week and I mentioned, you know, what's the point of a resolution? Well, it creates space for this kind of conversation, for one. And that's one reason why I'm in favor of it. And at the same time, I do want to apologize if anyone felt a lack of individual, undivided attention from me throughout the evening. There's, I could go into that a little bit. What I will say is that I realize the impact that my wandering ways might have on people. But please do know that I was listening. And in fact, you know, there's a lot going on on this computer screen. But mostly, it's just the live stream and the resolution, looking back and forth at that and taking notes and articulating my thoughts on the paper. This is something I do all the time. If I had my way, I'd be up here with a Rubik's cube the entire evening, just as I mean, that's how I process things and how I pay attention. But I apologize if the impact of that was that you weren't being you weren't being respected or felt like you weren't being heard. You know, I will add to that, that, you know, I do feel like we had to sit through a lot of comments tonight about baby killing. And I felt personally that my character was being impugned and attacked. And I feel that sense of aggression towards my colleagues up here at the dais. And so I know that I was elected to represent you and to listen to you. I do. I was here this whole time. I listened to every word you had to say. But I do reserve the right to maintain eye contact or not when I'm feeling personally attacked and provoked. So beyond that, with that out of the way, I just have a couple comments I want to make. Because I did speak at length two weeks ago about this. And I would deeply hope that anyone who's interested in my actual philosophies and opinions and very complicated nuanced feelings about this matter would go back and look at that video. Because I don't think you understand where I'm coming from when I reluctantly support a resolution like this. And I would appreciate it if you would take the time to do so. I do not want to repeat all those things tonight. They've been said, they're on the record, and I encourage you to do your research and look it up. But I really do feel the nuance to this. Someone mentioned my Catholic background. I don't know why that was, again, personally invoked and brought up. I would have preferred that the inquisitiveness of my position on this matter and this resolution while also being Catholic could have been a question that was personally asked of me and that it was a dialogue we could have entered into and we could have had a respectful, mutual understanding of where things are coming at. And that that wasn't used as a rhetorical device to make me feel attacked and uncomfortable up here. But as we all know, when we get elected to office, we choose, we don't stumble into this role. We choose to be here. And I was happy to sit here and be involved and affected by this conversation throughout the evening. I do support the resolution. I will support it as is. I don't think there's much more we can do. But I do think that this process and this conversation has been valuable. And I do think that it is here, in this space, where we can make true progress on intractable issues that get messy and very, very deleterious and violent at the national level. So I appreciate you all being out, coming out, having this conversation. I deeply appreciate some of the more thoughtful dissents or differences of opinion that people brought up. Again, my own position on this is very complicated and very nuanced and has evolved over the years based off of my own personal experience and stories. And I do think that this is something that is within the council's purview to facilitate a conversation like this and to make it known to the state where we stand as a council body with respect to our collective majority opinion on matters of interest at the state level that are happening here locally. I'll end by saying, you know, while we do have a 15-week ban right now, I think part of the, I think part of what was motivating this conversation from folks who wanted to hear from their council and their police department that they're protected, is that that could change. It could absolutely very well change. We need to make sure that our resources are being directed wisely, regardless of what the state legislature has passed into law at any particular time. And finally, as a total aside, there was a little bit going back and forth, Mr. Shimonie and Mark mentioning how you liked when we met at 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Instead, I'll just note, it's almost 8:00 right now. If we had started this meeting at 6:00 PM, it would be 11:00 PM right now. And I don't know that anybody who would have missed work at 3:00 PM didn't get a chance to come into City Hall and have this conversation right now. So I do believe the way the system we have set up at this current time does work. And there are matters that are important to the public where we will slate it not to begin before a certain timeframe on the agenda to allow for that additional public participation. Just wanted to tie up that loose end and make that observation. Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you, vice mayor. Council member House.
Thank you, mayor. I want to start by saying thank you to everyone that came out and spoke tonight and also to everyone that took the time to write to council. Over the course of last week and this weekend, I spent numerous hours responding to many of you and engaging in conversations that I believe were very meaningful and sharing the heartfelt message that I heard every single story that was shared with me. I appreciated every single perspective that was shared. I think ultimately, the key word for me in this conversation is nuanced. It is not a one-size-fits-all conversation. There is not a one-perspective fits-all who are engaging in this conversation. I think when it comes to each of our perspectives on this council, there is also a lot of nuance to where we each stand on this particular topic and the ways in which that may and may not play into our votes on this resolution. One of the main conversations that I had with many community members was the question of what does this resolution do? And the simple answer is that a resolution states an opinion of us as a council body. I do not feel that it is overstepping our bounds as council to do that. I do believe that as we are being presented with this conversation, it is part of our role to engage in that and share that opinion and have these sorts of conversations as difficult and as challenging and as nuanced as they may be. So with that said, I do, again, thank everyone that spoke this evening. I continue to support moving forward with this resolution. But I do not want it to be unheard or unseen that despite that personal stance for me, that does not mean that I did not hear the conversation. It does not mean that I did not hear your stories and your perspectives. I think it's also important to note that it does not mean that I believe in the murder of children. I found that a very problematic statement that was made at different points in this conversation. And I would simply remind folks that we are hearing multiple stories this evening. We have not heard every story. There are many stories that I think resonate and come forward from this dais that have not been heard and that will not be stated. Because I, again, I personally don't think that it's my, it's necessary for me to go into my whole story and background. However, I will just state that, as I stated last week or two weeks ago, that these are conversations that are felt in the heart of everyone. Particularly, I'll just speak for myself, that I feel it very deeply personally. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, council member House. Council member Sweet.
Thank you, mayor. I do want to thank all of you for speaking tonight, taking your time out to email us, call in. I was attempting to email all of you back and late yesterday, I just lost track and I apologize. But I read all of it. And I did hear you. Thank you for telling your stories to my fellow colleagues. Were your stories last week and this week, reminding us to help each other. For those of you who spoke on diversity, reminding us to show respect and allowing us to all not sweep this topic underneath the rug. This was a great conversation tonight. It made me pause and think. And I just want you to know that I did hear every word that was spoken tonight. With that being said, I do want to state boldly that I still do support this resolution moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Sweet. Council member Harris.
I want to add my thanks to those of my other council members for all your thoughtful emails and for taking the time. You know, it took you some time to write. And so we do appreciate that, I in particular. I read every one of those emails. Some of them later at night then, probably. I should have been reading them, but I did. And I appreciate people sharing their stories. That's important. Keep in mind that we have had many, many courageous conversations in this country over a lot of years. This is not going to be the last one that we have. The only way that we're going to move our The only way that we're going to move our community and our country forward is that if we're not afraid to have these conversations. It does not mean that we're all going to agree, but it means that we have to at least be willing to talk about it and to hear about the other person, hear the other person's experience and belief. I try not to ever speak for any other group or any other person other than myself, and so I would encourage us that when we're having these conversations, that we ought to be really respectful of other ethnicities and letting them speak for themselves. But it's helpful to be supportive and to be encouraging when these topics come up to other groups and encouraging them to voice their opinion on this. I am in support of this resolution because I do believe that we have the right to disagree with our legislators, and this is the appropriate way to do it. We get to tell them when we don't like something. And just because we got elected to the position or decided to run or whatever, it does not mean that we give up our right or our feelings just because we sit in these seats. At least, I don't think that I gave up that right when I sat in this seat. But I do think that I owe it to the people who voted for me and those who didn't vote for me to hear what you have to say and then make the decision that I think is best. And in this particular case, right now, I'm supporting this resolution. And thank you all so much for staying and for spending Tuesday evening with us. We really enjoy it because we're, sometimes, we're here by ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I just have a couple of things to say, and one is, I heard a couple of people talk about disrespecting, and my thinking and position on this, I mean no disrespect to anyone, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I take the democratic process very seriously, and I, I just want you to know that no disrespect has been meant. I also recognize that I have never made a vote that was supported by every resident of Flagstaff. It's impossible. I want everyone to know that whether it's this issue or the next issue that comes along, we can disagree, and I bear you no ill will. And I would hope that the same could come back at me if we are in disagreement. And I think that my colleagues, each one of you, has been so eloquent. Speakers were eloquent. I'm appreciative, again, of your time, and I am also still in support of this resolution. So, are there other?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Well, I need to make the motion first.
Read resolution.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Resolution Number 2023-12 by Title I.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring council's opposition to the United States Supreme Court decision in Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization opposing Arizona revised statutes, Section 36-2321 through 2326, and other provisions of Arizona law criminalizing abortion and supporting the constitutional rights of pregnant persons, including their access to reproductive health care and abortions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So, move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving down to item number 11, which is another round of public, which is another round of public participation. This is for anyone who has a comment about something that is not on the agenda.
Mayor, I do not have any requests for public comment.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we still have a little bit of our meeting left, so if you could take conversations outside so we could finish, that would be wonderful. Thank you. There's no public participation, so, all right. Moving on to item number 12, informational items, two from Mayor, two from Mayor, Council, and staff, and future agenda items.